Almost sounds like overkill with ten, every 10 minutes. Is that to meet the peak demand?
That's during the peak hours only. Outside of peak, it's between 20 and 30 minutes.
Okay. The 14th Street, of course, I actually lived there many years ago, back in 1979, for about four months. And 14th Street was congested. Obviously, it's changed over time. More lanes were added, et cetera. But to this day, still, 14th Street gets backed up in the early AM peaks in particular. Now, there was a question about emergency services and the ability to actually access the hospital. Is there any potential provisions that could be provided to allow EMS vehicles to use the right-of-way for our transit to, in a case where congestion on 14th Street prohibited the ability for EMS to access the hospital?
Do you mean using a transit way?
Yes.
Yes, emergency services can use the transit way today.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Which goes directly to the hospital, as you mentioned.
Yeah. No, it's, I think it's an important element that may not be well, well-known.
Your time's up.
I think he's been waiting to say that, like, forever. You're cut off.
Can, can I ask just one final question? It's related to page 16 of 17 with the updated traffic impact assessment.
No, no, sorry. Sorry, Andre. It's, uh, Councilor Dole, while you're up next.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. My question is, is there a, I know the answer, but I just wanna, is there an ASP for this area?
No, there is no ASP for this area.
Is there ERP for this area? Obviously not if there's no ASP.
Correct, no ERP for this area.
Okay, so we are putting together land use and design framework. What is it based on?
So the design framework is a non-statutory policy that would allow us to guide development of this site specifically. It is based off of using many of similar policies in our LAPs, but it's site-specific and doesn't span multiple communities.
Okay. It's a non-stat document. Is there, I just wanna understand, is there a requirement for public engagement and input on that?
From the MGA, no. We do not require the same level of engagement with a non-statutory document that we would with a statutory document.
LAP?
Correct.
So we didn't engage communities at all when we were taking, putting the framework together?
This was part of the larger application, which did follow our standard engagement. So it was circulated, the application, and it was something that included our standard notice postings and things like that as well, too.
Okay. Because that's, to me, I'd struggle with that if we are building a community, within a community that is existing, people are there, community is there, and we decide not to inform them or take their input into a framework that is gonna define this development?
We certainly were taking comments throughout the lifetime of this application, and those were used to inform the framework as well.
Okay. My second question is, the High Street, it's gonna be active urban hub. The framework is, design is very much hinging on that High Street. But there is no commitment that that High Street will ever be built. Because this is a feast approach. Is, are we okay with that?
Yes, that's a great question. So we, cognizant that development on this site will take a long time across the entire site. We, the staged approach is reflected in the policy, and particularly with the High Street. So one of the key objectives of that policy, I think I mentioned this yesterday, is to ensure that we have good connections between the BRT stop through the sites under consideration for land use today, right through the shopping center, and into South Glenmore Park. That's achieved through the High Street, and there's kind of two key pieces to that. The first is an interim condition, which is spelled out in the policy. And that interim condition would be built out with some of the first development permits that come in for the lands under consideration for land use today. And that would be an enhanced pedestrian connection that will provide that interim condition until such time that the rest of the existing mall is under consideration for development. At that time, then, that highest, the formal kind of High Street piece would kick in.
So High Street cannot be executed till there's a model for redevelopment of the commercial center?
I would say the High Street would take a kind of a staged approach to implementation. So you would have a condition of enhanced pedestrian connections being provided with some of the first development on these lands. And that would then be enhanced when future development happens on the shopping mall center. So we wanted, like I said, the intent was really to ensure that we have a high-quality pedestrian commercial environment that connects the stop to the park. And that's achieved through an interim condition, which the policy sets out the parameters of what that looks like. And then a future condition that has design elements around it and, and talks about kind of the types of uses and what build form should happen on a new alignment, a new-aligned High Street.
Okay. In this land use and design framework, it's a non-stat document. I didn't, I could be wrong, but I didn't find anything related to future engagements, consultations with the community as this area is built out in stages.
As we get more permits and development permits, potentially a land use on the commercial site, that would go through our standard engagement as well. And of course, we would be encouraging the applicant to do their own engagement also.
Okay. The last land use that was in Springbank Hill that had a really nice condition in there, that FAR is 3.5, but if the applicant does not meet the requirement for MR, publicly accessible, FAR, FAR will be reduced to 2. My question is, did we contemplate something like that here, saying if High Street, which is definitely a manatee that residents would appreciate, is not built out in certain stages, that there will be restrictions on amount of density that could go in here?
In this case, there is no MR owing on this site, so it is a different scenario. So that's not something that was considered, because there is no municipal reserve that would be owing here.
Now, I'll just add with respect to open space. So the, the policy that's in front of council today, there's kind of three key pieces to it. We talked about the High Street and the interim condition. But two of the other pieces, and the one I want to highlight, is a public amenity space. So if you look, there's a map in attachment three on page seven that kind of conceptually shows where that is. There is, because there is no municipal reserve owing, we can't require a public park here. However, the team did work with, with the applicant to define what a future publicly accessible private open space might look like. And that publicly accessible private open space is captured in the policy. So it would look and feel like a park, but it would be under, under private ownership.
I'd have last question. My, second last is, land use and design framework is not approved by council. So this land use is coming under a framework that has no council approval?
So the recommendations, the land use is being considered by council to be approved by bylaw. The land use and design framework is also before council to be approved by resolution. So while it's non-statutory, it would be, it's within council's purview today to approve that by resolution, but not by bylaw, as we do with a typical ARP.
Okay. My last question, and this was asked at the planning. This is a staged approach. Are you okay, and this was a question from one of the commissioners, if none of this materializes for next few years, is administration okay with this land use?
Yes.
Okay, great. That's it for me, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I don't see anybody else in the queue. I do have a question, though, for Ms. Wilbisher. Are members of council expected to declare pecuniary interest if they have it?
Yes, absolutely. There are rules in the Municipal Government Act which establish a definition for pecuniary interest. So, and then have requirements for council if an item is coming before council for which councillors have a pecuniary interest. And basically, if, if you've got skin in the game of an application before you, you can't, you, you need to declare generally your pecuniary interest, and you can't participate in the item at council. So you'd abstain, and as a practice, we always have the councillors remove themselves entirely from the meeting. And by bylaw, council has also passed a code of conduct that applies to all of you, and there are rules in the code of conduct as well. And we have an office integrity and ethics office that's set up to help councillors work through any of the issues that are set out in the code of conduct.
So if any of us had an interest in this development, if we were shareholders of RioCan, would we have to declare pecuniary interest?
Absolutely. You would have done that and probably, and, and likely reached out to the integrity and ethics office and abstained from participation in this item.
Okay. And so if somebody didn't do so, is there recourse against them?
Yes, there would be recourse.
Okay, good. Thanks for that. Let's go to councillor Penner to move the item.
Thank you, Chair. Through the public hearing, I have listened to hear the concerns that may or may not have been raised in the past 19 months. To consider those concerns, which have not been addressed through previous answers to the public or through recent changes to the application. I have evaluated them to answer, are they sufficient to lead me to believe this application could not advance? I know for some, the answer will always be no to redevelopment on this site. No is not a conversation starter, and it doesn't get us towards the goals and the outcomes we've also set out as a council and a city to work towards. Politically, it would seem like the most appropriate thing for me to do would be to deny this application. Yet here is the alternate headline I don't think many would be pleased to wake up to. Councillor rejects opportunity to attract millions of dollars of infrastructure and public amenity investments in over 1,000 new homes. I am interested in long-term success for our city. I believe that we are better when we do hard things together, when we move through the discomfort of change, and when we work towards our potential. And I thank those who reminded me of the values that I did put forward during my campaign, which I still hold dearly and have championed through many projects across Ward 11. Those values also stand along others that I put forward, including that a thriving city is the sum of our parts, co-creation between citizens, government, nonprofit, and the private sector. I believe in communities that embrace people across all ages, incomes, abilities, backgrounds, and experiences. We all want the best for Calgary, coming together and seeing each other as neighbors first, and using facts and data to make evidence-based decisions. Earlier, I noted that at the heart of these conversations is the collective discomfort with change and uncertainty. And I don't know many people who are those best selves in those circumstances. And I, too, have struggled through this application and not always been my best self. At our office, though, in response, has worked hard to put out over 10 pieces of communications specific to Glenmore Landing to address the concerns, to provide information, and to keep residents apprised of the process and the truths of the application before us. A little bit of history in this area. Almost immediately, actually, after being elected, I started conversations with administration about 16th and 90th. The challenges posed to pedestrians and the safety at this intersection, the small pies, the uneven paving. You will notice there is already a pathway realignment along 90th and better curb cuts at the East Shopping Center entrance. I championed those. And with this application coming forward, I want to ensure that other concerns raised by residents were addressed through the off-site amenity improvements. Those are now conditions of approval in the outline plan and design framework. So to the community, I have heard you. Your concerns have been advanced to improve this application. And yes, to that end, I have met with the applicant 13 times to hold both the applicant and administration accountable to responding to those concerns raised. It is why it has taken so long since this application was first submitted, because I wanted the absolute best that we could reasonably get. So as a result, we have nearly eliminated shadowing to the natural areas to the north and the west to preserve the ecology and the safety of the pathways. There are very specific conditions in the outline plan that speak to those areas and their protection. We've ensured shadowing into the community of Haysborough has been reduced and in most cases eliminated during peak outdoor ti, outdoor use time during the spring, the summer, and the fall. My kids have friends and neighbors there. I am working to protect those people. I have asked countless times about the impact to the reservoir and water quality. Our lead of water has not expressed any concerns. Those who are leading the Glenmore Water Treatment Plant have not expressed any concerns. So it is true, as I've said, 90th and 16th is not an ideal intersection. And to that end, the outline plan and design framework ensures the upgrades at the cost of the developer, which improve the vehicle, pedestrian, and cycling access points and safety. And so that means that even if facilities like the JCC benefit, they don't have to contribute to the costs of their future redevelopment. Infrastructure upgrades, water, sewer, electricity, all at the cost of the developer. The east-west pathway along 90th is protected. There are provisions for both improvements and an additional sidewalk.
Thank you, councillor Penner.
Our birth-credibly designed guidelines. You betcha.
Thank you. Let's go to councillor Cora.
Yeah, I'm gonna second this, and I think, appreciate councillor Penner's opening debate. I'm gonna offer sort of more of a global perspective. In 1999, the City of Calgary's Transportation Department started to sound a warning bell. And they said, as we brew, as we breach a million people, we cannot expect to move people around this city as we have in the past. The Transportation Department, the people responsible for making Calgary, you know, the most, the best city in the world to be a driver, according to a series of rankings. They said, we cannot keep on keeping on. We have to do things differently. That plan was called the GO Plan. And 10 years later, after extensive community consultation, the City of Calgary passed a municipal development plan that, for the first time ever, said, if we continue just growing out on the edge and committing to automobility as the only way to get around this city, we're doomed. And we need to instead rebalance. We need to make sure that growth on the edge continues, but we have to balance that over the next six decades with growing up in established areas. And the expectation was that 50% of growth over the six decades between 2009 and 2069 would occur in the established areas, and 50% would, would, would occur on the edge of the city. 1999 to 2009, our growth was 105% on the edge, minus 5% in the established areas. That means that even as we were growing as a city, and everyone who was moving to the city was moving to new communities on the edge of our city, we were still distilling people who were living in the established area out onto the edge as well. 2009 to 2019, we achieved 10% redevelopment, 90% growth on the edge, which means that over the next five decades, 2019 to 2069, 58% of our growth has to occur in established areas. This is for environmental reasons, this is for financial reasons, this is for economic diversification reasons, this is for housing reasons. And I believe that the universal upzoning that we did on the base level of zoning will account for about 30% organically of that 58% of growth. The other 70% has to occur in receiving areas for growth. Places like the East Village, places like the Bridges, places like University District West. I think we need 40 or 50 of those. And they have to be delivered by a combination of the City of Calgary, the private sector, non-governmental, you know, organizations like the Calgary Municipal Land Corporation. And, you know, the fact that we have places like this, where the private sector is stepping up and taking a piece of auto-dependent infrastructure and creating a node of urbanism on a private, on a primary transit network, is a best practice. The devil's gonna be in the details. It has to be high-quality space, but you cannot think of a, I mean, it's a beautiful place to live. It's a beautiful place to shop. We have to get it right. But that starts with the yes or no question that's before this council today. And the answer for me is yes. And if you believe in the future of this city and all the work we've done to set ourselves on a great path forward that, you know, will celebrate everything that we've done right and will build towards a future that's coming at us, you have to support this. Please do.
Thank you. Let's go to councillor Spencer.
Thank you, Mayor. This is green space that, for the most part, is being used, I would imagine, for dogs and not too many picnics alongside major roads. The use is infinitely being improved for those green spaces. To trade those for 1,100 units makes an awful lot of sense. The actual project, that shopping complex and what is being envisioned for the future is infinitely better as well. Really appreciate the history lesson and the broad city shaping implications as they were laid out sequentially by councillor Cora, councillor Penner. I'm, I'm glad I didn't have to be you through this. These, these are the hard decisions that we have to make as a city. To the community that has been really, really concerned about this, we see this all over Calgary. I think of a small project in, in my ward called Westman Village, when it first was being conceptualized, there was great concern over it adding a few extra floors. And now it is a much beloved destination in our community that is almost universally applauded and accepted and a point of pride for, for our community. My, my hope is that this will, this project will become that as well. And obviously, there will be some growing pains, but I will be supporting.
Thank you. Let's go to councillor McLean.
Okay, thanks, Penner. Kind of caught me off guard for a second. I'm running out of time. First off, I just want to acknowledge that the administration, you guys have put a lot of work into this, and I do appreciate that. You know, sometimes we can be critical of administration for the items becoming before us, but I want you all to know, don't take it personally. It's not against anything you guys are doing. It's usually just the item. And it can get emotional, because, I don't know, you guys work for the city, I work for the city, but I feel like I work for the people out there. And so when they're talking and they get upset about items, and sometimes we get emotional. And so, again, there's, we get a lot of people coming up that have to tell their stories about how it affects their lives, and it, and it impacts all of us. We get about, this, we get some same people show up, and it's the same people over and over again telling us how we can't do this, because if you do it, if you don't accept this density, then you're a NIMBY, or you're a climate denier, or you're racist, or something. And a lot of times, they don't even live there. So I put a lot of credit into the people that actually live in these neighborhoods, for every land use that comes before them. Anyways, I just wanted to say that, get that out front, because, again, it's this item sometimes that I don't like, and I don't like this one at all. It's just too much density in a small parcel of land. My quick experience, I did a ride-along, and we were looking for a child abductor at Glenmore Landing. And we had to cut through around the reservoir in the bike pass and the cruiser, and we had to go through into Glenmore Landing itself. And it was so jam-packed, we got trapped. We couldn't get out of there because of so many people. And this is before the type of density. So I wonder about the EGRAS or in and outs of police services, fire protective services, all that. So that's a consideration I think we, we have to take, keep in mind. And another, maybe story about, I can relate to in my area, Shawnee Stoops was a golf course. It's not a reservoir, but it was a really big, nice piece of green space. And they paved, paved up dice, and they put up a parking lot. To use a song for the phrase, it's, they're doing okay there, but what I've noticed in that area with that much density, right now, one presenter was talking about the noise in the construction. So every time I go through there, it's crazy, just the parking right now, before it's even fully developed, getting in and out of there, the construction, the noise, it's packed in there real quick. And again, it's not even hats of density of that. So I can, I'm just comparing the two things again, how that doesn't, I just can't see how this is going to work with that much density in that small piece of, of land. I know we want to densify in the city. I'm a suburban councillor, and I act from, this is, I had an acreage, about the same size of this lot on the south side in Silverado, and I saw the city grow up around me. And the outskirts, though, they're doing it right. In Silverado, we've got the room to grow, and we can plant it out thoughtfully, high density, medium density, low density, commercial. I couldn't imagine that, a little five-acre, where I had like a house and shop and a couple horses with multiple towers all jammed into that one piece of land. It just, it's just a visualization is why I think all the questions and concerns are coming from these people. If there was a way to come back and say something a lot smaller, or we could put it here or there, but at the end of the day, I won't go through all the different reasons and all the different things we've heard from the public and all their concerns, but we have all heard them. I think they're all very valid. I think we should listen to the people on this one. And please don't support this. Let's just say no to this, and then maybe they can come back with something that's more acceptable. That's all, thanks.
Thank you, councillor McLean. Let's go to councillor Wynes.
Thanks. I hear my colleagues' points and how they were looking at this perspective from a small-box piece of planning. But what we have to factor in is we are building densif, and densifying around our water resource. This council knows that we have, have plans coming forward about water restrictions and how best to protect a very precious resource for municipalities, your drinking water. We've had scares with our water, where we had a rainbow slick on it because of the sailing club's followboat, which, again, the city was on high alert for responding to that. We have deep in our water, and we have runoff from the current build-out and how our stormwater system is starting to crumble. My concern is, is that how we did something in the past isn't necessarily how we should do something going forward. Our water is something that we have to be very mindful and concerned about. And what you, when you look at other municipalities, they do not build this much density around their reservoirs. And so for me, I'm calling on my colleagues to not support this, because the climate change is about cities ripping out concrete, finding ways to naturalize and not actually create channels of runoff and miss the drainage that needs to be focused on. And so I'll keep it short, but think about the water and think about what in the years to come. There will potentially be fences that will have to be put up. We will stop being able to interact with the reservoir the way we do today, because we are facing drought conditions, and that means it's a precious resource that we need to protect. Thanks.
Thank you. Let's go to councillor DeLong.
Council, I think this time, the community got it right. This is too much for the area, as far as I'm concerned. Can it accept more density? Absolutely. And I think it should accept some more. But not before we need to look at the logistics of the area. The Ingris, the EGRIS just doesn't work. If you haven't been there, drive through it. It's, it's not a, it's a chaotic location as it is now. I'm not really agreeing with this even being a TOD. To me, it's simply of, an extravagant bus stop. There should be more density, but not as it stands. I won't be supporting this build-out. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm just looking to see if we have any other questions in the queue. Councillor Sharp?
Yeah, thank you very much. Okay, so, you know, I, I listened with intent. I did meet with RioCan, I did support the land transfer in January. I did a little bit of work on this myself with the community and found out the community did a lot of work on this themselves. They door-knocked. They made it very clear where they stood during this public hearing. I think one thing we need to stop saying as a council is that people are saying no to development. They're not saying no to development. They're not saying no to affordable housing. The members of this community and the Calgarians want responsible development that matches the infrastructure in all areas, in particular this one. I actually don't have enough time to talk about water, because it affected my communities so much. So councillor Wyne said exactly what I needed to say. It's just like, I think it's irresponsible, considering everything we've endured this last summer. We also talk to the community members like we actually know better. They actually know better, they live there. We set policy, we govern, we talk about budget, but the community members come first, and we have to start thinking about that. We need to listen and not lecture. We need to base our decisions on facts, and those facts actually do come from the community members. RioCan, I'm a big fan of yours. You did a fantastic job in Brentwood, and I know there's more to come. But I will say, I did get a bit of concern, I did get concerned when I heard the one thing about there could be a possibility of flipping the land. And why am I concerned? Because who knows who that goes to? And they're not here to listen to the concerns of the community like we were, like you were. And I know it was taken out of the agreements and all that, but that concerned me, because we're in a time right now where people are uneasy about where they're living. I can tell you, after I left here last night, I had a situation that I know is not going to get easier for a housing provider in Bonnass. I don't want that to happen to you. So I hope you still continue to build in Calgary. I know you will. But we do need to listen to our communities. And with that, I will not be supporting this file. to listen to our communities. And with that, I will not be supporting this file.
Thank you. There has been a question from councillor Chu. You haven't made a request to speak. Would you like to bring it up? Okay. Requests can't come in a chat. If you have a request, you need to RTS. Okay, nothing? Okay. Let's go to councillor Chabot.
Thank you. Well, I'll be brief. Councillor Demong actually covered some of the issues that I had. I think the proposed density is too much. There's other concerns that have been raised by other colleagues that I also shared. The reduction in the parking requirement directly related to BRT, I find challenging to accept because for me, it's not an LRT whilst it maybe recognizes equivalent to an LRT. The fact that it doesn't really connect up to other LRT lines makes it challenging to accept that it'll be utilized to its ultimate objective as identified within the land use bylaw when we're talking about LRTs. This is not an LRT. It's a BRT that doesn't actually connect to an LRT. So it kind of makes it just maybe a higher priority bus. The potential full buildout of this site, if it results in a lack of parking, could potentially spill out into the community or alternatively as it gets phased in, there may be some additional traffic studies as identified in the report that a future TIA may be required as different phases move forward. If during the process of those TIA's, it's determined that additional parking has to be provided to accommodate full buildout, where is that parking going to go? There's only so much surface parking that can be accommodated and there's some commercial uses. As you start building buildings, you've taken away some of that surface parking. So where's the parking? It's going to have to go underground. What impacts will that have on water quality? We don't know that today because we haven't had to go down that road. So, I don't know. There's, for me, there's too many challenges with this site and I appreciate the fact that it was scaled back from what it was originally envisioned to. I think it's still too much. I can't support it.
Thank you. Let's go to councillor Meehan, please.
Thanks. Well, I'll start by saying thanks to all the citizens who came to raise concerns. It is a citizen's job to raise those concerns and it's a councillor's job to seek answers to those. And I've listened very intentionally to concerns about shadows. We've seen the shadow studies and the ways that that could be mitigated. I've heard concerns about water. Again, we have experts that we can ask about water. As has been mentioned by administration, we build very big towers by the Bow River. We've built around the reservoir before and we can do it safely. You've also heard about utilities and traffic. We've heard about the 30% drop in traffic since 2014, the changing nature of the area given that we have the ring road. But I think one of the really important pieces was the environmental concerns that residents had and the request for a biophysical impact assessment, which is a condition of this approval. And so what happens with applications like this is as they go forward, as you do those biophysical impact assessments and like the project gets scaled to an appropriate development that makes the traffic work, that keeps it environmentally safe and keeps the project still viable. And so to the concerns that people have, like they're all legitimate, but I think that there are legitimate answers and we do this across the city all the time. Also, when you look at the incentives that both RioCan and the city have, they're in the right direction. So if RioCan builds a development that just doesn't work, they won't sell their towers. Like it's as simple as that. Like they have every incentive to get it right because they actually have to make money off of the development. And if you put a whole bunch of stuff that doesn't work, no one's going to buy there. And then no one else is also going to come and keep being a consumer of the tenants that they currently have and they'll lose money. So they have that incentive. But then the city also has an incentive to not let a developer run amok and create problems because then we are going to have to clean that up. And so the amount of stipulations that are put, the amount of studies that are required, I think if you've never been on the development side of it, you just have like, we just have no clue of how much work is actually required to be able to bring these things online. I will also say like, you don't meet with a developer 13 times to give them a pat on the back and tell them that you're excited about their development to come to council. You do that because you're like really trying to make sure that we get the right outcomes on a development like this. And it's needed because like this is a big development. I'm not undermining that. We also, and councillor Spencer brought this up, he can think of one in his ward. In ward three, we have an application that's going to be coming forward on Aurora Business Park. It's not quite the same built form, but it's going to have a lot of people and it's built around a BRT as well. But the difference is we don't have dedicated lanes. We don't have a BRT that goes to a university downtown, a hospital, a rec center, a grocery store on site. Like we really do have to get serious about finding places for people to live and doing it around existing infrastructure that we have. And so I totally appreciate that the community is concerned about these things. I really believe that there's valid answers to those things and I think that the development will get scaled to the appropriate level to make it work. Because if it doesn't work, it's a problem for the city, it's a problem for the residents, it's a problem for the developer. So everyone has their incentives and I believe the right place. I will raise some concerns, I think with my colleagues, like leaning into fears of the community when we know that we have the right checks and balances in place to make sure that those things are taken care of. So like leaning into anecdotes about the water. We know that the water main break that happened in Bonaux was a catastrophic failure that didn't have anything to do with development. And so I think to like lean into that and be like, yeah, we can't do this because of water is just like undermining like the trust that we have in public institutions that for sure make mistakes at times, but nine times out of 10 get it right. And it's just, it's really hard to listen to those things continue to be brought up. This can be done and I think it can be done at an appropriate scaled level that works for everyone, but you can never even get to that point if from the beginning you're just like, nah, no thanks. And that just leads to the intersection to councillor Penner's point, like never actually getting looked at, never getting improved. And honestly, like then we have these discussions as we continue to grow out of the city, which like on the outskirts, which is not financially sustainable in the long term to continue to do, which was mentioned by councillor Carr. We also get frustrated people because of taxes continuing to go up. So we have underutilized infrastructure that we never look to try and figure out how we can use better. We're just going to pay more and more to have people with a quality of life that they're not getting that public investment. So in my area, we have a lot of new communities, like we won't even get the bus up there to be able to do it because it's just so far and those public dollars just don't go as far as they need to. And when you think about how big Calgary is, like we cannot just continue to grow out with reckless abandon. We have to think about how we're balancing these things. So I do think this is the right application. I think a lot of these things can be mitigated and worked through. But unfortunately, I think that this might get caught up in the general fear mongering that I think that our leadership in this city and in broader in politics is heading.
Thank you. Let's go to councillor Thaliwall.
Thank you, Mayor. Very interesting. This is, I agree, this is not about politics, this is about people. This is not fear mongering. This is their legitimate concerns and if we don't want to listen to them, then I think we shouldn't be here. And RioCan, they can come back in six months. They have six months to work with the community to get it the way it's middle ground for both parties. Land use and design framework, that was what I heard, there was minimal consultation. And I also urge the community, I mean, it's good to come and speak, but I urge you guys to get engaged right at the start stage. When city's asking you to give your feedback, please get engaged. The framework was the right place for you to get engaged. So, and councillor Demong, you nailed it. Like this is just a bus stop. This is not even an LRT. This is, and I know in my ward, on July 6th, there was an application that came here for 420 plus units in a parking lot of the grocery store. And I know how residents felt about it. That was not the right place without putting proper development lens into it. I come from development. You have to bring future into present. And right now I'm seeing lots, and I know it's a staged development. It could take 15, 20 years, but the worst case scenario, worst credible scenario is if it comes, all of it comes at one point, what are we going to do? Do we have proper infrastructure? Do we have water services? Do we have sewer? Do we, I don't know. So I know this is hard, this is housing, but I think what we heard from residents for the last two days is they have concerns. So I urge RioCan to go back, get them engaged, get the input and maybe if you're willing to do this in a phased approach, they are your partners. So with that, yeah, that's it for me, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's go to councillor Wong.
Thank you, Mayor. And again, thank you to the applicant as well as thank you to the community for being here. I just want to echo again what councillor Demong said. I've been here since 1980 and I've gone up and down 14th Street many times since 1980 and I see it, you know, from an egress and a transportation perspective a lot harder. My questions to administration were very telling, I guess, in terms of where I'm going with this. And that is, I asked the question, you know, why don't we have an LAP? Why don't we have this defined as a comprehensive planning site? Why don't we have a better perspective of all the ins and outs around this, both in the site and around the site? Because again, at the end of the day, you know, this is not just one, you know, one parcel. This is moving pieces of parcels that are going to be developed over different times. This morning I had a conversation with the LAP team about the Riley LAP and for the same reasons, again, I have concerns about some of these because we aren't looking at everything in Riley, particularly North Hill Shopping Centre, which is another one of these comprehensive sites. And to that end, I think we owe to our communities to ensure that we provide a wholesome and thoughtful strategy, not just an application review. A strategy of how this moves in and out from a people perspective, from a vehicle perspective, from a business perspective, even a wildlife perspective. We need to see it all. We heard a lot of comments and complaints about the impact to the ecology, the wildlife. I didn't see enough of an answer there as to, you know, what this application does relative to the pathway leading to the ecology area north of the site. I didn't hear enough as to what this particular parcel does relative to the shopping centre or the future of the shopping centre. I heard a bunch of incrementals, but not necessarily a comprehensive view. So for that reason, I have a problem with doing such a development or such an opportune site without the full plan. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I don't see anybody else in the queue. Over to you to close, councillor Penner.
I am deeply disappointed in my colleagues because all of the answers to all of your debate were there. You've had a chance to meet with the applicant with administration on this file. I'm going to start by thanking administration. Mel Hawkins probably listening. I don't think she's in the room. Tireless file manager on this file. Thank you for critically reviewing the community feedback that has come in over the 19 months and for being innovative enough to bring forward the design framework. That is not something we see often and I thank you for that ingenuity. Along with the outline plan, it covers multiple comprehensive conditions for improved pedestrian and cycling networks, the traffic flow improvements, and what I would have eventually hoped was a better interface between the retail and the parking. What I had hoped is that my colleagues would hear that through the outline plan, the design framework, the improvements are safeguarded to come sooner and not later through the development permit process. What I would hope my colleagues would have heard is that this application moves our city towards meeting our goals. What I would hope they would have heard is that I did listen to the residents. I may not have agreed with all of their arguments.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. When we had public presentations, no one interrupted you. Everyone treated you very politely. I would please ask that councillors be given the same respect. So thank you for that. Go ahead councillor Penner.
I may not have agreed with all of their assertions, with all of their renderings that were inaccurate, with all of their displays of old shadow studies. I may not have agreed with that, but I responded every single time with information, facts, the process and how to get involved. Not once did we hear from the public any comments on the outline plan or design framework. I can tell you with assurance councillor Wyness, that I have met with the Water Service Team around the Glenmore Reservoir. I can't get snow clearing in the Weasel Head because we are so concerned about the water quality and about driving a bobcat down there and the spill that our equipment might have. I can't get an additional motorized boat on the reservoir to help with the Disabled Sailing Association because we are so concerned about protecting our water. I can tell you this administration takes our water very seriously. I really remain committed to the values and the principles of city building. It is not about stopping applications, but about forging paths forward which balance the interests and outcomes that work towards the future state. We have heard from Calgarians over the past three years about where they want a development and this is it. We heard from councillor McLean and councillor Chabot through budget about how the private market could do TOD better. Here's your opportunity to support that. In fact, I know it was actually councillor Chabot who supported the original notice of motion who got this going in the first place. We can't talk about an underutilized BRT and then not put people where it is. This supports our goals and strategies. I commit to working with the community. I would urge you to support this application and show how we can work through processes together.
You're just at time. Thank you. Let's go to Escribe to vote, please.
Councillor Wong, your vote, please. Councillor Walcott, your vote, please.
Yes.
Mayor Vondik, all the votes are in.
Thank you. Could you display the results, please? The motion is defeated in a six to eight vote with councillors Demong, McLean, Wyness, Thaliwall, Wong, Chu, Sharp and Chabot voting against. So we go back to the regular order of the agenda now, right, Mr Clerk?
That's right, Mayor. We will now proceed to 7.2.1.
Okay, 7.2.1 is up next. We're just gonna, you're ready to go from there? Okay, Mr Pomeranki, please take us away.
Thank you, Mayor. My name is Derek Pomeranki. I'll be presenting the first batch of items on the remainder of the agenda today. Item 7.2.1 is a land use amendment to allow for additional commercial uses within a light industrial area. Next slide, please. The recommendation before you today is to give three readings to proposed bylaw 300D 2024 to redesign the site located at 4220, 108th Ave, North East, from the Industrial General or IG district to a direct control district based on the existing IG. Next slide, please. The subject site is located in the northeast industrial community of Stony Three. This is near the intersection of Country Hills Boulevard and Meati Trail, North East. The community of Cityscape is to the east and the Calgary International Airport is visible on the west. Next slide, please. The subject parcel is just under one hectare in size and is currently vacant. The immediate area is currently developing with a number of newly constructed buildings and projects under construction for light industrial with supporting commercial uses. Nearby residents will be happy to know that a new cell tower is under construction nearby to improve service in the area. Next slide, please. Surrounding land uses support a business park and include a mix of industrial general or IG and industrial commercial or IC. Typically in areas such as this, you'll have IG in the center and IC located in the periphery of the industrial area towards the larger roads. Next slide, please. This application proposes to redesignate the site from IG to a direct control district based on IG. The direct control differs from the base district only through the addition of 13 commercial uses, some permitted, some discretionary. No other changes to height, floor area ratio are proposed. These additional uses represent most of the uses found in the IC district, which are not available in IG. What's before you today is to seek to preserve the flexibility of the IG district, which would allow for light industrial uses in the future rather than making a permanent shift towards commercial. This land use district is identical immediately to the northwest and is in alignment with both the area structure plan and the municipal development plan. Next slide, please. In closing, this application would allow for greater flexibility in the development of the business park while retaining general industrial uses as per the city's industrial growth strategy. Calgary Planning Commission supports the application and recommends council's approval. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your presentation. Let's open the public hearing on this item. It is 7.2.1. Do we have Daryl Grant? All right. Do we have anybody wishing to speak to 7.2.1?
Sorry, Mayor Gondak?
Yes.
It's Daryl Grant on the bridge.
Yeah, please go ahead.
Yeah, just, it was, the presenter provided the information as expected. I don't really have anything to add. I'm just available to answer any questions council may have. Thank you.
Thanks very much for joining us. I don't see any questions for you in the queue. So I will ask once again, is there anybody else wishing to speak to item 7.2.1? I'm not seeing or hearing anyone else, so I'll close the public hearing on this item. I also don't see any questions of administration. Over to you councillor Thaliwall.
Thank you, Mayor. Very straightforward application. It's a DC with retaining the industrial channel uses, but giving some flexibility for other uses. And it came to Planning Commission. There was an amendment done and made this direct control district even better. control district even better. So, yeah, thank you.
Can I get a seconder for this, please? Counselor Demong, thank you. I don't see anybody else in the queue. Over to you to close, Counselor Thaliwal.
Close.
All right, Escribe to vote, please.
Counselor Walcott, your vote, please.
Yes.
Thank you. Mayor Gondak, all the votes are in.
Thank you. Could you display the results, please? That's carried unanimously. First reading of bylaw 300D 2024, anyone opposed? Hearing none, that's carried. Second reading of bylaw 300D 2024, anyone opposed? Hearing none, that's carried. Authorization for third reading of bylaw 300D 2024, anyone opposed? Hearing none, that's carried unanimously. Third reading of bylaw 300D 2024, anyone opposed? Hearing none, that is carried. I believe that moves us on to item 7.2.3. Mr. Palmerankey, please go ahead.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Item 7.2.3 is an application seeking to close a portion of public land and designate it for consolidation with the adjacent place of worship. Next slide, please. The recommendation before you today is to hold a public hearing and give three readings to proposed bylaw 14C 2024 to close a small portion of public right-of-way, and to hold a second public hearing and give three readings to proposed bylaw 285D 2024 to designate the area as special purpose community institution or SCI district. Next slide, please. The subject site is located in the western community of Christie Park. This is approximately near the intersection of Sarsay Trail and 17th Avenue Southwest. Soraco LRT Station on the Blue Line is approximately a two-minute walk away. Next slide, please. The subject parcel is approximately 1,300 square meters in size. It is currently undeveloped. It features a stand of trees on it, and it slopes substantially from the west down towards the east. Next slide, please. As shown here, this site is the westernmost edge of the right-of-way for the interchange of Sarsay Trail and 17th Avenue. Surrounding land uses include a place of worship immediately to the west and a multi-residential townhouse complex, complex as, excuse me, to the north and northwest. Next slide, please. This application proposes to redesignate the site to SCI district, which is intended to allow for large-scale culture, worship, education, health, and treatment facilities. It offers flexibility in building form and asks that structures be sensitive to their context. The same district is to the west of the site and would allow for consolidation with that property. The applicant intends to expand their parking lot. However, we have not received any development permit application at this time. Next slide, please. In closing, this application would allow for a busy place of worship to expand their parking lot to hopefully alleviate some of the parking spillover affecting the neighbors. Calgary Planning Commission supports the proposal and recommends council's approval. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your presentation. Let's open the public hearing on this item. Do we have Adam Barber? Okay, do we have Carmen Branch?
Yes, I'm here.
Hi, please go ahead.
Thank you. Good morning, Mayor and council members. My name is Carmen, and I am speaking today on behalf of the board at Christie Park Lookout, the complex directly north of the Calgary Islamic Cultural Center. Many of us provided initial comments of opposition earlier in the development process, and you'll see several letters from members of our board in your public submission, attachment eight on item 7.2.3, including one from my partner and myself. Our board opposes the extension of the cultural center's parking, and I'm speaking today to summarize our concerns and urge council to reconsider this development. The first concern that I'd like to outline is that we were all quite surprised to hear that this is not actually a parking lot expansion, but rather a parcade that is proposing to be built. You'll see this exemplified in most of the letters that you perceived. They all reference parking lot expansions. The details of this development have been incredibly vague within our community, inclusive of any parcade details. Community involvement has been next to nothing, as outlined in the applicant's outreach summary, attachment five, where they state emails outlining the proposed project and benefits were sent directly to the property management companies, and that feedback to date hasn't influenced project decisions. That's because there's been no effort to collect feedback. The application states we have not provided responses, but the email sent to our property management company was only informative and did not call for conversation. The fact that this development is now parcade only heightens our biggest concern of safety. There is only one road in and out of both our condo association, the cultural center, but as well as every, all of the other buildings on 14th Street Southwest, east of Costello Boulevard. When the cultural center hosts worship events commonly but not exclusive to Fridays and the entire month of April during Ramadan, this entire road often becomes gridlocked, and it can take anywhere from 15 to 30 minutes to travel a distance of about 500 meters. This poses obvious safety concerns where there, if there were an emergency, fire trucks or ambulances would not be able to get in or out. These are safety concerns for us, residents, but also the attendees of the Islamic Cultural Center themselves. While building a parcade or parking lot will increase their parking allotment and get their cars out of street parking, like mentioned, it will only fuel the bottleneck of having a one-road entrance and exit. Several members of our association have also witnessed or been part of near misses with those who exit the parking lot at the cultural center. They often fly out of the parking lot with no concern for pedestrians or other vehicles on the road. While we have other concerns regarding attendees parking in our fire lanes and our visitor parking stalls, vandalism that has occurred to residents by attendees of the cultural center in our complex, they are outlined in detail in the public submission, so I won't read them now. Other parking alternatives do exist in our community. A nearby seniors home offers underground parking for a nominal fee, or perhaps the city might consider making the Sea Train parking lot across from 17th Avenue available during worship. Most notably, however, the cultural center is about 25 meters away from the Soraco Sea Train Station. The Sea Train platform is directly attached to their existing parking lot with a set of stairs and a wheelchair ramp. We've heard in past applications through this hearing about increasing ridership, and it feels as though this parcade expansion directly opposes the transit-oriented development policy. We urge council to oppose this expansion and instead find ways to encourage the attendees of the Calgary Islamic Cultural Center to use transit. Please do not vote to increase the suggestion and safety risks in our community that will come with this development. Thank you.
Thank you very much for joining us, Ms. Branch. If you can just answer a question for me. I was remiss in not saying that there would be two public hearings here. There are two separate ones. One is for the road closure and one is for the bylaw. So the one that I've opened on first is for the road closure, and you did speak to that. Will you be wanting to speak to the next one, too, or are you good with what you've stated?
If my comments will be considered for the next one as well, then I'm fine with what I've stated.
We can absolutely do that. I would hate to bother you twice.
Thank you.
Great. And you have a question from Counselor Meehan.
Thanks, Mayor, and thanks, Carmen, for coming on and explaining your concerns. I have been in an area, many areas, with Friday prayers, and I understand how challenging it can be with cars. I guess, and I hear your points about wanting people to take transit, we certainly do. I guess what I'm trying to understand is if we provide more off-street parking here, how you think it would make it worse, or how, like, saying no to the application would make it better? Like, that's the part I'm sort of struggling with because, in general, like, if they're clogging up the street and then now they have more space to park off-site, like, we would hope that that would make it better, but you're sort of saying that you don't think it would. So can you just explain?
Yeah, absolutely. So I actually don't find that the congestion is the issue with them parking on the street. It's actually the exodus that happens afterwards, and while they're kind of entering, is what I would say is the larger concern, at least from a community member. And so the way 14th Avenue is structured is there's two lanes in and out, and then it kind of goes down to a very narrow road as you reach the Islamic Cultural Center and then actually enter our townhome complex. So the road I take to get directly to my garage, the proposed structure will actually be at the farthest east end of this. So they would need to exit either through this very narrow road or through this kind of what becomes like a single lane in and out on either side. And so while, yes, increasing kind of their allotment for parking structure will allow for more people to park and get their cars off of the road, how will all of these people exit? I just think, I just don't foresee how this will possibly alleviate any of those challenges of us seeing kind of highly increased congestion during Friday worship and during Ramadan, and often delays that can be up to 30 minutes.
Yeah, okay. Thanks for that explanation. Appreciate it.
No problem.
Thank you very much. I don't see any other questions for you, Ms. Branch, so thank you very much for joining us, and I'll remind council of your comments when we go to the next public hearing.
Thank you.
Thank you. Let me ask, is there anyone else wishing to speak to 7.2.3? Great, I'm not seeing or hearing anyone else, so I will close the public hearing on bylaw 14C 2024, which was the road closure bylaw. I'll now open the public hearing on proposed bylaw 285D 2024, which is the actual redesignation. And we have just heard from Ms. Branch, if we could put it on record that she did her comments for both in her one presentation, thank you very much. Is there anyone else wishing to speak to this item? It's 7.2.3. Right, I'm not seeing anyone, so I'll close the public hearing on this item. Over to you, Counselor Karaw, with a question.
A tissue had covered my little thing, and I couldn't figure out what was going on. I removed the tissue and I pressed the microwave, the microphone. Okay, I'm here. The speaker from the community talked about a parcade. Has anything been designed yet? Is there a DP in or anything like that?
We have no development permit, no concepts. We've received nothing.
Yeah, I'm not aware of anything like that either. This is just a simple transaction to take vacant land and put it to good purpose because we have a cultural institution that is drawing a lot of traffic, that parking is spilling into the surrounding neighborhoods, and this is going to alleviate some of that pressure, period. So, Mayor Gondak, I'm happy to move this at the appropriate time.
Counselor Karaw, I'm just looking. There's one more question, so I'll come back to you. Let's go to Counselor Sharp.
Yeah, it was similar to Counselor Karaw's question, but is it normal that we would get a development permit when these closures come in for institutions like this?
They will need to get a development permit eventually, but there's no requirement for them to do it right now.
Okay, just because I'm looking through some of the feedback from the community, and they were just concerned that there was no development permit with this, and I just wanted to know that that was inside common standard practice that they would have to. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Spencer.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, just a quick question for admin. We've seen these to some degree before, often related to visions of offering more community amenity, if it's a community of faith, city land for a parcade right beside a train station. I'm getting whiplash just with the one we just had. Can you, policy-wise, so policy-wise, nothing stands in the way, but from a values perspective, this one does feel strange. So can you maybe speak to me, speak to me about, like, was there a conversation about the use of the land or encouragement around housing or public amenity beyond parking?
I would say that we did not have those conversations. We responded to this application as it came in. This is, they wanted to buy a piece of city property. We're okay with it. It's a small piece. We're not presuming to force them into wholesale redevelopment of the entire property at this time. That's from the Planning Department stage. I'm not sure if Mr. Labucci wants to chime in.
Thanks, Mr. Palmerankey. Shane Bootsey Development Engineering, this acquisition of land is in direct response to community concerns that you heard today about parking on the roads, about parking in the complex, about parking all over. So the intent by the applicant was to provide that space for their faith worship services to alleviate community concerns. And through a future development permit, we'd be looking at ways to calm traffic. We'd be looking at the stop sign on the major road as well, and to see what we can do to ensure, to mitigate these impacts and actually improve what's happening there today.
Okay, thank you very much. No further questions, Mayor.
Thank you. Let's go to Counselor Wyness.
Thanks. I too like Counselor Spencer getting a little bit of whiplash here. I'm just kind of curious, was there ever a conversation about building up a tower for parking rather than spreading wide for parking?
Not that we're aware of. We just know the current, they're looking for more land to expand their parking. The exact form of the structure that that parking expansion will take might go up in the future. We don't have a development permit in front of us.
Okay, and then what kind of traffic calming exercises were done by administration before we ended up at this point?
I did, was in contact with our operations teams earlier. They mentioned they had gone on-site. The private parking, the private landowner condominium road is signed and such. There is, two-way stop speeds are low here with the traffic congestion. So on the public roads to date, there has been no traffic calming measures.
And then the issue that's driving the expansion, is it just, like, Fridays and certain periods of time, or is it a constant issue?
I mean, that might be best for the applicant to answer, honestly, but my understanding is, as the Calgaryian who called in mentioned, sorry, I don't have her name up in front of me, is that it is due to worship times and worship months.
Okay, and then to address the whiplash that we're feeling is, how is it that we get presentations like we've had earlier for the Rundle Schools, near the Rundle School site, that we're trying to reduce parking there and drive development? And then here now, we're just, like, you look at the map, it's mind-blowing how close it is to TOD site, and now we're saying we have to expand for parking. I don't know how, like, how does admin choose what they tell council when it comes to the same issue?
Counselor Wyness, I would suggest that in this case, this is meant to serve as an interim step in maintaining the existing use on the site. The Islamic Center is not looking at moving at this point. They're looking to maintain their operations and fix something that's spilling over and affecting the community negatively. This isn't looking at wholesale redevelopment. At the time, if they choose to pursue wholesale redevelopment, you can expect that we'll be pushing for something similar in intensity and in transit-oriented development style that would be consistent with some of the other applications you've seen today.
But I'm just really confused. The narrative doesn't hold true. Like, you're telling me to approve development with less parking, and then now you're telling me in another development that doesn't even involve housing to build more parking. So I'm, I think that's why council's getting whiplash. Is there a metric that we're using when it comes to how we're evaluating projects and around TOD?
There are many metrics. I would suggest the issue that you're looking at here becomes down to a difference in use. So in those other cases where we're promoting lower levels of parking, that's because we're promoting places for people to live and work. So we're expecting that the people can be living and choosing to commute to work in a manner that is based more around transit. In this case, I imagine that this Islamic Center probably has a greater citywide regional draw that almost requires that more people are going to be driving there rather than using transit as a part of their daily commute.
But then my next question is, like, could we not build housing if this surplus city lands? Aren't we driving to build housing versus parking spots?
Yes, we could absolutely build housing here if that's the direction of city council.
Great, okay, so I'm gonna think about this one. It's a tough one now. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's go to Counselor Meehan.
Actually, all my questions have been asked, but the applicant was not here, hey?
Nope.
Okay, okay. Okay, thanks.
Okay, thank you. I don't see any other questions in the queue. I'll go to you, Counselor Karaw.
Yeah, the first thing I'll say is that Mr. Mike Joma, who's a board member of MAC, was here for big chunks of the last two days but could not attend today. You know, I'm deeply sympathetic to the idea that we want all the land right around our transit stops to be turned into housing. I have a hard time entertaining that debate considering the vote that we just made about a private sector-driven plan to put a ton of housing right around our primary transit. In an ideal world, and maybe in the future, the Muslim Association of Calgary will consider housing as part of the program for this incredibly well-used regional draw mosque. What happens in a lot of communities is you have cultural institutions like this, and they draw people from around the city and around the region, and it creates a little bit of a snarl in the surrounding neighborhood. I have this conversation in Inglewood all the time, you know, people complaining about the fact that there are cultural events at the Lantern Church, or, and it's hard to park right in front of your house. And I ask them, would you rather live in a neighborhood where there's nothing going on, or would you rather live in a neighborhood that has vibrant things like this? This is just a very simple thing that we're doing in the short term to take vacant land that I think alone would be hard to build on. I think alone would be hard to build on, not comprehensively planned with the mosque, and creating a little bit of a pressure release valve for a snarl that's taking place in the neighborhood. So for people who voted against tons and tons of housing right next to primary transit because the neighborhood was objecting, this is the city stepping up, working with an institution to create a short-term minor fix for a minor snarl that's taking place because this is such a well-used cultural institution. If you want to sort of pursue a long-term strategy of trying to make it so difficult for the neighborhood and this cultural institution to coexist, then vote against it. And maybe 20 years from now, they'll be at each other's throats, the neighborhood and the cultural institution, something will have to change. If you want to pursue a strategy for putting housing next to our transit, you know, right across the street, there's a huge city-owned park and ride that would be much more easily comprehensively redeveloped, and we can start there, and then we can work with partners like the Muslim Association of Calgary to sort of think about putting housing on their parking lot. But right now, in the short term, this is a good, short-term, minor fix for a minor challenge that's taking place in the neighborhood to support the coexistence of the neighborhood and this well-established cultural institution. And to vote against it is madness. Please support.
Thank you. Can I get a second for this, please? Counselor Penner, thank you. Let's go to Counselor Spencer.
Thank you, Counselor Carr, for that excellent debate. I still just, this one feels so weird. The fact that we're giving city land for parking in a TOD after this council ranked applications over the coals with city land that was for 1,100 units of housing, I just feel like I'm caught in some weird dream that I need to wake up from. I'm gonna, I'm gonna vote no on this, because I don't want this land to go to parking. Excellent debate, and it may rue the day, but I'm voting no on this. This, this is, this is weird. Where are we right now?
We're in day three of a public hearing, my friend. I don't see anybody else in the queue. I'm gonna go over to you to close, Counselor Carr.
Yeah, I guess my close would be, yeah, noted. It is weird to be supporting parking in a transit zone, but it is a very small weird compared to the decision we just made. And, you know, it would be an inconvenience for building the kind of city that I would hope we are all committed to building, which is a place where people, neighborhood life and cultural institution life can coexist as seamlessly as possible. In the fullness of time, I hope to see a vibrant urban core anchored by this mosque surrounding this primary transit network station, and I hope that the city takes lead on that. But in the short term, let's just do a solid for both the neighborhood and the mosque and allow a little bit of pressure release valve, release parking on what is otherwise vacant fallow land.
Closed. Thank you. East tribe to vote, please.
Oh, will Mark Counselor Demong absent? Mayor Gondak, all the votes are in.
Thank you. Could you display the results, please? Motion is carried eight to four with Counselor YnS, Counselor Spencer, Counselor Chu, and Counselor Sharp voting against. First reading of bylaw 14C 2024. Anyone opposed? Counselor Sharp is opposed, and that is carried. Second reading of bylaw 14C 2024. Anyone opposed? Counselor Sharp is opposed, and that is carried. Authorization for third reading of bylaw 14C 2024. Anyone opposed? Hearing none, that's carried unanimously. Third reading of bylaw 14C 2024. Anyone opposed? Hearing none, that is carried. First reading of bylaw 285D 2024. Anyone opposed? Counselor Sharp is opposed, and that is carried. Second reading of bylaw 285D 2024. Anyone opposed? Counselor Sharp is opposed, and that's carried. Authorization for third reading of bylaw 285D 2024. Anyone opposed? Hearing none, that's carried unanimously. Third reading of bylaw 285D 2024. Anyone opposed? Hearing none, that is carried. All right, let's go to 7.2.5. Mr. Palmerinkey.
Thank you, Mayor. Item 7.2.5 is a land use amendment to allow for six dwelling units plus six secondary suites. Next slide, please. The recommendation before you today is to give three readings to proposed bylaw 283D 2024 to redesignate the site located at 2640 Capitol Hill Crescent Northwest from residential grade-oriented infill, or the RCG district, to the housing grade-oriented, or HGO district. Next slide, please. The subject site is located in the northwest community of Banff Trail. This is on the east side of Crowchild, just north of 24th Avenue Northwest. The site is approximately an eight-minute walk to the University LRT station on the red line. Next slide, please. The subject site is a mid-block parcel facing Capitol Hill Crescent and is currently developed with a single detached dwelling and a detached garage. Vehicle, vehicular access comes from the rear lane. Next slide, please. Surrounding development consists mostly of single and semi-detached dwellings under the RCG district. Several parcels within a block or two have been redesignated to the HGO district. The University of Calgary is located to the west across Crowchild Trail and is designated as a major activity center in the municipal development plan. Next slide, please. This application proposes to redesignate the site to the housing grade-oriented district, which is intended to support grade-oriented housing in a variety of attached, stacked, or clustered forms. This district allows for a maximum building height of 12 meters and a maximum floor area ratio of 1.5. Next slide, please. In closing, this application allows for ground-oriented housing close to a major activity center and is in alignment with the Banff Trail area redevelopment plan. Calgary Planning Commission supports this application and recommends council's approval. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your presentation. Let's open the public hearing on this item. Do we have Nick Han? All right, so 7.2.5, do we have anyone wishing to speak to this? Seeing and hearing none. I'll close the public hearing on this item. Looking for questions for administration and not seeing any. I'm looking for a mover. Counselor Wong, please go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, colleagues. This application, an HGO application, is a piece of, is on a strip of property that is adjacent to Crowchild Trail and 24th Avenue intersection. This is an opportunity again to build some density very close to both the university as well as the University LRT station. This application again has the requirement for six suites above and six secondary suites below, thereby providing a great opportunity for some housing density that's desperately needed around the university. Thank you.
Can I get a second, please? Counselor Thaliwah, thank you. Don't see anybody in the queue. Over to you to close, Counselor Wong.
Close, thank you.
Thank you. East tribe to vote, please.
Mayor Gondak, all the votes are in.
Thank you. Could you display the results, please? That's carried unanimously. First reading of bylaw 283D 2024. Anyone opposed? Hearing none, that's carried. Second reading of bylaw 283D 2024. Anyone opposed? Hearing none, that's carried. Authorization for third reading of bylaw 283D 2024. Anyone opposed? Hearing none, that's carried unanimously. Third reading of bylaw 283D 2024. Anyone opposed? Hearing none, that is carried. Mr. Palmerinkey, 7.2.6.
Thank you, Mayor. Item 7.2.6 is a policy and land use amendment to allow for grade-oriented infill housing. Next slide, please. The recommendation before you today is to give three readings to proposed bylaw 85P 24 to amend the Banff Trail area redevelopment plan and to proposed bylaw 282D 2024 to redesignate the site located at 2016 and 2020, 17th Ave. Northwest from the residential grade-oriented infill, or RCG district, to the housing grade-oriented, or HGO district. Next slide, please. The site is located in the northwestern community of Banff Trail. This is at the southeastern corner of the community. The site is within the area of the 16th Avenue North urban main street and is approximately an eight-minute walk from the Lions Park LRT station at North Hill Mall. Next slide, please. This site is approximately 34 meters wide and 36 meters deep, consists of two residential parcels which are currently developed with single detached dwellings and rear detached garages on the lane. Next slide, please. Surrounding development consists primarily of residential development experiencing infill activity at a variety of densities. Commercial developments are located one block to the south and to the southeast. Next slide, please. This application proposes to redesignate the site to HGO, which is intended to accommodate grade-oriented housing in a variety of attached, stacked, or clustered forms. It has a maximum building height of 12 meters and a maximum floor area ratio of 1.5. Next slide, please. Should council wish to support this application, map amendments are needed to the Banff Trail area redevelopment plan. This subject site would be amended on Figure 2 from low-density rowhouse to medium-density low-rise to allow for stacked dwelling units. Next slide, please. In addition, Figure 3 would need to be amended to allow for the maximum height of 12 meters allowed under the HGO district. Next slide, please. In closing, this application would allow for the provision of grade-oriented housing in a suitable location. Calgary Planning Commission supports the application and recommends council's approval. Thank you.
Thanks very much for your presentation. Let's open the public hearing on this item. It is 7.2.6. Do we have Lee Wang?
Yes, Your Worship.
Hi, please go ahead.
Good morning, Your Worship. This is Lee Wang from Horizon Land Development and Consulting, Inc. I'm speaking in support of this application. The proposal is change the law from the existing RCG zoning to HGO zoning for grade-oriented development. When HGO was first introduced, it has rather strict criteria. For the, for the area that has no LAP, it has to be inner city and has to either within 600 meters of RT station, 400 meters of existing BRT station, or 200 meters from the existing primary service network. I'm glad to say this law not just meet one of those criterias, but also it meets, actually meets all of those criterias. It is within the 600 meters from the Lions Park station, within 400 meters of the Route 303 Max Orange BRT station, and also within a two-parent service network. So during our public engagement, we, we find people are in general, in general understand why we want more density in this, in this area. The comments we received most is people want to see how we actually plan to build here. So to tackle that concern, we actually have a concurrent, not, we have actually already submit a DP application for city to review. In summary, this law must meet all the location criteria under HGO. We sincerely hope council can support this application. With that, I conclude my presentation. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your presentation. I don't see any questions for you in the queue, so thanks for taking the time to join us today. And let me ask, is there anyone else wishing to speak to 7.2.6? Okay, I'm not seeing or hearing anyone else, so I'll close the public hearing on this item. I also don't see questions of administration. Over to you to move, Counselor Wong.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, colleagues. Again, this is another HGO application in the Banff Trail area. Different from the last one, this is also adjacent to the Lions Park LRT station as well as the Banff Trail LRT station in between both University of Calgary as well as site, and also very close to McMahon Stadium for, for those who go on football. This is an HGO application which allows 12 meters and therefore the future champions of the Calgary St. Peters when the Grey Cup comes here will be great tenants for this building. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Sharp is seconding. Okay. I don't see anybody else in the queue. Over to you to close, Counselor Wong.
We'll close, thank you.
Thank you. East tribe to vote, please.
Mayor Gondak, all the votes are in.
Thank you. Could you display the results, please? That's carried unanimously. First reading of bylaw 85P 2024. Anyone opposed? Hearing none, that's carried. Second reading of bylaw 85P 2024. Anyone opposed? Hearing none, that's carried. Authorization for third reading of bylaw 85P 2024. Anyone opposed? Hearing none, that's carried unanimously. Third reading of bylaw 85P 2024. Anyone opposed? Hearing none, that's carried. First reading of bylaw 282D 2024. Anyone opposed? Hearing none, that's carried. Second reading of bylaw 282D 2024. Anyone opposed? Hearing none, that's carried. Authorization for third reading of bylaw 282D 2024. Anyone opposed? Hearing none, that's carried unanimously. Third reading of bylaw 282D 2024. Anyone opposed? Hearing none, that is carried. Mr. Palmerinkey, 7.2.7.
Thank you, Mayor. My last item for today is a land use amendment to allow for the use of an office within an existing house. Next slide, please. The recommendation before you today is to give three readings to proposed bylaw 296D 2024 to redesignate the site located at 111 28th Avenue Northwest from multi-residential contextual low-rise, or MC1 district, to a direct control district which is based on the existing MC1. Next slide, please. The subject site is located in the northwest community of Tuxedo Park, near the intersection of 28th Avenue Northwest and Centre Street, which is an urban main street. Next slide, please. The site consists of one parcel currently developed with a single detached dwelling and a rear detached garage. There is a lane along both the rear of the parcel and its east side towards Centre Street. Next slide, please. The parcel shares the lane to the east with the commercial development facing Centre Street. Residential development on surrounding blocks is primarily low-rise, multi-residential housing under the MC1 district. Under MC1, this subject site could be developed up to 14 meters in height with a maximum of eight dwelling units. Next slide, please. This proposal seeks to redesignate the site to a direct control district based on MC1. The DC differs only through the additional discretionary use of office when located in an existing building. Any future redevelopment would revert back to the rules of the existing MC1 designation in alignment with the North Hill community's local area plan. Next slide, please. In closing, this application allows for the interim use of a building without compromising the long-term plan for the area. Calgary Planning Commission supports the application and recommends council's approval. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your presentation. Let's open the public hearing on this item. It's 7.2.7. Do we have Kishen Gudjer? Kate, do we have anyone wishing to speak to 7.2.7? Seeing and hearing no one, I will close the public hearing on this item. Counselor Wong, questions for administration? Okay, over to you to move then.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, colleagues. Again, as administration indicated, this is just additional of a use on the existing building to allow office use, and once the office use is not used, it will go back to the original zoning. Thank you.
Thank you. It's being seconded by Counselor Chabot. Anything to add?
Nothing, thank you.
Can't see you over there. Hi, thanks. Okay, I don't see anybody else in the queue. Over to you to close, Counselor Wong. Can you just turn on your mic?
We'll close, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, east tribe to vote, please.
Mayor Gondak, all the votes are in.
Thank you. Could you display the results, please? That's carried unanimously. First reading of bylaw 296D 2024. Anyone opposed? Hearing none, that's carried. Second reading of bylaw 296D 2024. Anyone opposed? Hearing none, that's carried. Authorization for third reading of bylaw 296D 2024. Anyone opposed? Hearing none, that's carried unanimously. Third reading of bylaw 296D 2024. Anyone opposed? Hearing none, that is carried. Mr. Palmerinkey, thank you for joining us this morning. Let's now go to Ms. Ganzar for 7.2.8.
Thank you, Mayor Gondak. My name is Lindsay Ganzar, and I am with Community Planning. I'll be presenting the next eight items on the agenda. Next slide, please. The next item on the agenda is a land use redesignation application to enable a multi-residential development. The recommendation before council is to give three readings to proposed bylaw 295D 2024 for the redesignation of 115 and 121, 21st Avenue Northeast from the multi-residential contextual low-profile, or MC1 district, to the multi-residential contextual medium-profile, or MC2 district. Next slide, please. The subject site is located in the community of Tuxedo Park. The site consists of two parcels on the south side of 21st Avenue, just east of Centre Street. Next slide, please. The site is approximately 0.2 hectares in size, and each parcel is developed with a single detached dwelling and detached garage, accessed from either the side lane or the rear lane. Next slide, please. The subject parcel is surrounded by a mix of residential, commercial, and institutional uses. Multi-residential develop, or dwellings, excuse me, are located to the east, south, and west of the site, shown in brown on this map. And two places of worship are located one block to the south, shown in blue. And two places of worship are located one block to the south, shown in blue. The Centre Street urban main street corridor is located a half-block to the west, and the Edmonton Trail urban main street corridor is located two blocks to the east. Both provide for retail, medical, restaurant, and personal service uses and easy access to frequent transit service. Next slide, please. Oh, sorry, I jumped ahead. Should still be on the previous one. The subject parcel is currently designated as the multi-residential contextual low-profile district, which is intended to accommodate multi-residential developments in a variety of forms adjacent to low-density residential development. The maximum density currently allowed in MC1 is 148 units per hectare, which, based on the site area, would currently allow up to 30 units. Next slide, please. This application proposes to redesignate the subject site to the MC2 district with a density modifier of 296 units per hectare. Similar to the MC1 district, the MC2 district is intended to be applied in close proximity or adjacent to low-density residential development, and is typically located along transit corridors or near community nodes. The maximum building height is 16 meters or four to five stories, and a density modifier of 296 would allow up to 60 units on the site. However, the potential number of units depends on all other requirements of the district being met, including setbacks landscaping and parking. Next slide, please. For the reasons identified today and in the report before you, Calgary Planning Commission recommends that council give three readings to the proposed bylaw for the redesignation of the subject parcels. Thank you, Mayor Gondak.
Thank you very much for your presentation. Let's open the public hearing on this item. It is 7.2.8. Do we have Lees Ferreira?
Yeah, I'm here.
Hi, please go ahead.
Hi, so good morning, everyone. My name is Lees, and I'm here today on behalf of Professional Custom Homes as the applicant for the LOC 2024-0135. As fellow Gaurins, we deeply understand the challenges posed by the current housing crisis, which continues to limit access to stable housing, whether through home ownership or long-term rentals. With this in mind, we have approached this proposal with careful consideration and are confident that it aligns with the council's vision and the city's current housing strategy. Thank you for your time. I'm happy to address any questions you may have.
Thank you very much for your presentation. You have a question from Council Wong.
Thank you, Mayor. Ms. Ferreira, just a quick question. Under the previous MC1, was there, and realizes a maximum potential of 30 units, was there a potential building a parquet in that structure or no?
So we are looking, we are currently working on the development for the site, and we are looking into having an underground parquet. Our major concern with changing from MC1 to MC2 was mainly for the potential of units that we could achieve on the site with four stories of residential.
Okay, but if you had not changed it, if it remained as MC1, was there potential for a parquet?
I believe so, yes.
Okay, that was it. Thank you.
Thank you. I don't see any other questions for you in the queue, so thanks for taking the time to join us today. Do we have Shelby Milne? Hi, please come on up.
Good morning, afternoon, or good morning, councillors and mayor. My name is Shelby Milne. I am here today to speak in opposition against the proposed land use change at 115 and 121st Avenue Northeast on behalf of myself and 36 of my neighbors who also reside on the block being affected. The opposition is founded on the severe negative impacts that development will have on the block, which will decrease the current quality of life that we currently enjoy. To be clear, the issue at hand is not an increase in density on these properties, but rather an increase in density above and beyond the capabilities of the block. The proposed development, should you pass the land use application today, will increase the density of the current lots by 20 times. This is an absurd increase in density. To put this into perspective, the proposed development would increase the density of the block from 44 residential units today to 101 residential units. This is more than doubling the density of the entire block in less than one-fifth of the available land space. This will create a huge decrease in quality of life of all the current and future residents for a multitude of reasons. Parking. Parking on the block is already difficult. The city now requires residents to pay for the right to park in front of their own homes, but we must battle every day with people from outside our community using our street to visit nearby businesses. Increasing the density of our block to this extent will only exacerbate this issue, and parking in front of your own home, which you are paying for the right to do, will become almost impossible. Traffic. Traffic flow is already difficult on the block and surrounding streets due to ever-increasing density in the neighborhood. The streets are relatively narrow, and there are minimal traffic control measures such as traffic lights and roadlines. Getting into and out of the alleyway is difficult on a daily basis due to the high volume of people utilizing that roadway to enter and exit their homes. Adding an additional five dozen residential units will intensify this issue. Infrastructure maintenance. The back alleyways in Tuxedo Park have not been maintained. There are countless potholes, most of which are massive and difficult to navigate around. These alleyways were designed for far fewer vehicles than they must deal with today. Adding such a high increase in density will degrade the infrastructure quicker and increase the difficulty of getting access into and out of the alleyway, as already mentioned. Sunlight impacts. The proposed development will be four stories high with additional bump-ups on the roof reaching five stories. The building will also run the length of six single-family homes across the street that range from one to two stories in height. The shadowing impact will be severe. No one in these properties will be able to see the sky from their front windows and will have their homes cast in relative darkness all winter long. This is simply inappropriate, as no one outside of the downtown core should expect buildings multiple stories higher than their homes to be built around them in such close proximity. Loss of green space. The properties in question are home to over a dozen mature trees, and many more immature trees and other landscaping is present, too. The proposed development will all but eliminate the green space that exists there today, and any landscaping the developer could put in place will never make up for the loss of beautiful trees that live on those properties today. In conclusion, the change in land use from MC1 to MC2 would have a very disruptive impact to the block. The immense increase in density that the land use change would cause parking issues, more than double traffic, degrade failing infrastructure faster, significantly reduce natural light to the street and surrounding properties, and forever change the streetscape of the block. By denying this land use change, the current MC1 designation would still allow the developer to move forward with a project that could greatly increase the density, 10 times as we heard today, of the lots without reducing the quality of life of the other residents who call this avenue home. As residents of the inner-city, we expect change, and we usually embrace it. However, we expect the changes that impact us the most to be made with great consideration and respect to our existing properties. We, the residents of 21st Avenue Northeast between Centre Street and First Street Northeast, implore council to consider the impacts that this land use change have on our lives, and please reject the land use application. Allow their properties to remain as an MC1 designation, the same as all other residential properties in the vicinity. We support the developer increasing the density of these lots, but not to the extent that it causes harm to our well-being and daily functioning. Everyone involved, including the City of Calgary, the applicant, and the current future residents of the block, can win by maintaining the MC1 land use designation. Thank you for your careful consideration.
Thank you very much for your presentation. You have a question from Council Wong.
Thank you, Ms., excuse me. Thank you, Ms. Milne, for being here. Can you just quote again what you just said in terms of what you thought the number of units are and the height, the floor height?
Yes. So the proposed development on the lot, there is a DP, I believe they're called, open on it. They are asking for 60 units, which they have also released the plans, like the full plans for this. Under, as was said today, under the MC1 designation, it's around 30 units or so that would be allowed, keeping it as an MC1, which is very dense, especially considering you're placing two single-family homes, one with a basement suite, so three residential units today.
Okay, and the number of floors?
The number of floors is four, but there will be additional bump-ups to five-story for rooftop access.
Okay, thank you. I thought I heard different numbers quoted there, but thank you for that.
Yes.
Okay.
I don't see any other questions for you in the queue, so thanks for taking the time to be with us today. And let me ask, is there anyone else wishing to speak to item 7.2.8? Okay, I don't see or hear anyone else, so I'll close the public hearing on this item. Council Wong has a question of admin.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a quick question, and again, when we talk about this one being going from 12 meters to 14 meters and four floors, 30 units to 60 units. In here, I'm not sure if I saw the number of parking stalls that would be allocated. I know it's an additional, but what's the actual parking stall count on this?
The required parking stalls would be 0.625 stalls per unit.
So the actual number would then be?
I will have to do a quick.
By 625 times 60, right?
Right.
So about 35, 37, around that mark? Would that be fair?
38.
38, okay. I thought my math was pretty close. Okay, thank you. That was all in you know. Thank you.
Council Wong, I think Ms. Goldstein was trying to weigh in.
Sorry, I always have microphone issues because that the podium and my microphone seem to be connected, so only one of them can be on. I would just say that I know that we have a development permit that's obviously on DMAP, and so we have lots more details than we normally would, but it would be a range around the parking stalls, because we wouldn't know at this phase exactly what that form would be. Thanks.
Thank you. And it's not the conflict between that. There can only be four mics on. So there was already four on, and that's what happened. I killed the other ones, so here we are. Good news. I don't see any other questions of administration, so I'm seeking a mover. Council Wong, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council. This application, as much as it's going from MC1 to MC2 and increasing and doubling the density of it, is one of those things that we keep often saying that if we're on a main street, a centre street is with a future BRT and ultimately LRT, this is a great location to put density. So therefore, again, I would support it. I understand the community is concerned about increased density, particularly as it relates to the block and the laneway, and I think those are things that can be addressed through a development permit. Thank you.
Thank you. Can I get a seconder, please? Council Meehan, thank you. Let's go to Council Sharp.
Can we get one and two called separately, please?
Yes. Okay, I don't see anyone else in the queue. Over to you, Council Wong.
Thank you, Mayor. We're closed.
Thank you. Let's go to East tribe.
Mayor, take us just a moment to set that up to be called separately.
Oh, yeah, that's right.
Apologies, we'll just.
Sorry, no, that's on me, moving too quickly.
No worries. Thank you for your patience, Mayor. We're ready to proceed with the vote on.
All right, so the first vote is, as you see it on the screen, it is point number one. Please go to East tribe.
Mayor Gondak, all the votes are in.
Thank you. Could you display the results, please? That's carried 10 to 3 with Councillors Chu, Sharp, and Chabot voting against, and let's go to the second vote, please. This motion is just to keep things confidential. Please go to East tribe.
Mayor Gondak, all the votes are in.
Thank you. Could you display the results, please? That's carried unanimously. First reading of bylaw, 295D 2024. Anyone opposed? Council Chu, Council Sharp, and Council Chabot are opposed, and that's carried. Second reading of bylaw, 295D 2024. Anyone opposed? Same division of councillors opposed, and that's carried. Authorization for third reading of bylaw, 295D 2024. Anyone opposed? Hearing none, that's carried unanimously. Third reading of bylaw, 295D 2024. Anyone opposed? Same division of councillors opposed, and that is carried. And Ms. Ganzar, we are on to 7.2.9.
Thank you, Mayor Gondak. The next item on the agenda is a land use redesignation application to enable a multi-residential development. Next slide, please. The recommendation before council is to give three readings to proposed bylaw 299D 2024 for the redesignation of 330 Fourth Avenue Northeast from the multi-residential contextual grade-oriented or MCG district to the multi-residential contextual medium-profile or MC2 district. Next slide, please. The subject parcel is located in the community of Crescent Heights on the north side of Fourth Avenue, between Second Street Northeast to the west and Third Street to the east. Next slide, please. The parcel is approximately 0.06 hectares in size and is currently developed with a single detached dwelling with lane access at the rear. Next slide, please. Surrounding development consists primarily of parcels developed with multifamily dwellings shown in brown, with several single-family dwellings shown in yellow, all of which are designated for multi-residential development. Rotary Park is located two blocks to the west and contains such amenities as sports courts, playground, spray pool, and dog park. The Edmonton Trail urban main street corridor is located one block to the east and provides for commercial uses and easy access to frequent transit service. The parcel is currently designated as the MCG district with a density modifier of 72 units per hectare. The MCG district is intended to accommodate multi-residential developments of low-height density adjacent to low-density residential development. Next slide, please. This application proposes to redesignate the subject site to the MC2 district. Similar to the MCG district, the MC2 district is intended to be applied in close proximity or adjacent to low-density residential development. The maximum building height is 16 meters, which is approximately one story higher than what is currently allowed, and the maximum floor area ratio, or FAR, is 2.5, although the final FAR will be determined once all other requirements of the district are met, including setbacks, landscaping, and parking. Next slide, please. For the reasons identified today and in the report before you, Calgary Planning Commission recommends that council give three readings to the proposed bylaw for the redesignation of the subject parcel. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you for your presentation. Let's open the public hearing on this item. It is 7.2.9. Do we have Lees Ferreira?
Yes, I'm here.
Hi, please go ahead.
Good morning, again. So as per the left side in this one, I'm here representing Professional Custom Homes again as the applicant. And just a quick summary, we've been contributing to the redevelopment of Calgary since 2013, and our commitment to addressing the housing crisis remains unavering. With the LOC that we're proposing in this application, we're taking the same thoughtful approach to ensure it aligns with council's vision and the neighborhood's context and the goals for Calgary's housing strategy. Just as with our other projects, this proposal prioritized creating diverse and inclusive housing options, something we believe is essential to fostering a more equitable city. Thank you once again for your time and consideration. I'm happy to provide any further details or answers to any questions in my hat.
Thank you very much for your presentation. I don't see any questions for you in the queue, so thanks for taking the time to be with us. Do we have Celita Chiang? Do we have Celita Chiang? Okay, how about anybody else on item 7.2.9? All right, seeing and hearing none, I'm going to close the public hearing on this item. Council Wong for administration.
Thank you, Mayor. This particular property, administration, this particular property on the North Hill Local Area Plan is in the North Hill Local Urban Form category, correct?
The urban form category is neighborhood local, yes, which allows up to six stories in building height.
Up to six stories?
That's correct.
I thought the neighborhood local is a maximum of three stories in between your map three and four in the LAP document.
I don't believe so. It's six stories.
So any neighborhood local in the North Hill plan goes up to six stories?
If somebody could correct me if I'm wrong?
No, sorry. What I was saying is that there are some neighborhood locals that have modifiers on them and some that do not. What Ms. Ganzar is saying is that this one does not, which is noted in the report.
So therefore, six stories is allowed in this neighborhood local, then you're saying?
So, sorry, I just wanted to go, I was on the last item still. That is what it is saying. Correct. The difference, where there is a policy document and where there is a land use, what we would what we would intend here, because the urban form category is low, is that we would default to the low.
Okay. Okay, I guess my question is then, why would this not have been in the urban form category and index the neighborhood connector as opposed to neighborhood local, therefore making it a lot more consistent with the rest of the LAP?
This is to Ms. Ganzer.
Sorry, I'm not too sure what you are asking there. Could you repeat?
Why would, why, and maybe this is inappropriate for you, because it's an LAP question, why would this area not have been designated neighborhood connector as opposed to neighborhood local? Because again, generally neighborhood locals in the North Hill plan is up to three stories, whereas connectors will allow you to go up to six or more, right?
Right. Again, somebody may correct me, but the distance from the Edmonton Trail Main Street corridor, it's outside, I would believe, of the area that was designated as connector parcels. So it's just a little bit further out. So had this parcel been closer to the Edmonton Trail Main Street, it likely would have been designated as connector, or not designated, but labeled as.
Okay. I guess I have a bit of conflicting in the, you know, again, the LAP. Most people understand the LAP being neighborhood local being up to three stories, and this particular case, it looks like an exception. And what I was looking for was in the recommendation, an amendment to the LAP, to make it more of the neighborhood connector, therefore aligning with the, you know, what the application is and the building scale that's looking for.
So just to be clear, the low building scale is six meters, or sorry, not the building scale, but the urban form category. So I think there might be just conflicting between the two, but in this particular location, it is up to six meters.
Okay, thank you then.
I don't see anybody else, so I'm looking for a mover. Counsel Wong.
Mayor, counsel, this is a straightforward application going to a MC2 district, allowing for multi-residential on, close to Edmonton Trail, and allowing people to, again, live very closer to the downtown core. Thank you.
Can I get a second for this, please? Counsel Thaliwell, thank you. I don't see anybody else in the queue. Over to you to close, Counsel Wong.
Close, thank you.
Thank you. East Scribe to vote, please.
Mayor Gondik, all the votes are in.
Thank you. Could you display the results, please? That's carried unanimously. First reading of bylaw, 299D 2024. Anyone opposed? Hearing none, that's carried. Second reading of bylaw, 299D 2024. Anyone opposed? Hearing none, that's carried. Authorization for third reading of bylaw, 299D 2024. Anyone opposed? Hearing none, that's carried unanimously. Third reading of bylaw, 299D 2024. Anyone opposed? Hearing none, that is carried. Ms. Ganzer, we're on to 7.2.11.
That's correct. Thank you, Mayor Gondik. The next item on the agenda is a land use redesignation application to enable a mixed-use development with active commercial storefronts at the street level. Next slide, please. The recommendation before council is to give three readings to proposed bylaw 2ADD 2024 for the redesignation of 1155 Seventeenth Avenue Southwest from the Commercial Corridor 1, or CCOR 1 district, to the mixed active frontage, or MU2 district. Next slide, please. The subject parcel is located in the community of Lower Mount Royal, on the south side of Seventeenth Avenue, between Tenth Street to the east and Eleventh Street to the west. Next slide, please. The parcel is approximately 0.17 hectares in size and is currently developed with a surface parking lot and a one-story commercial building that currently contains a restaurant. Next slide, please. Surrounding development consists primarily of multifamily dwellings shown in brown and commercial developments shown in pink. The subject parcel is located on the Seventeenth Avenue neighborhood Main Street corridor, which provides a vast array of multi-residential developments, commercial uses, and frequent transit service. The parcel is currently designated as the CCOR 1 district with a floor area ratio, or FAR, modifier of 3.0 and a maximum building height of 23 meters, or approximately seven stories. The CCOR 1 district is intended to provide a wide variety of commercial uses with storefronts along a continuous blockface, while also allowing opportunities for residential and office uses on upper floors. The district also requires that at least 20% of the gross floor area contain commercial uses. Next slide, please. This application proposes to redesignate the subject site to the MU2 district with an FAR modifier of 5.0 and a maximum building height of 26 meters, or one additional story than is currently allowed. Similar to the CCOR 1 district, the MU2 district enables street-oriented developments with a mix of residential and commercial uses, while requiring commercial uses on the ground floor to promote activity at the street level. However, it does not require a minimum area of commercial uses in the building as found in the current district, which allows a higher ratio of residential uses. Next slide, please. For the reasons identified today and in the report before you, Calgary Planning Commission recommends that council give three readings to the proposed bylaw for the redesignation of the subject parcel. Thank you, Mayor Gondik.
Thank you very much for your presentation. Let's open the public hearing on this item. It is 7.2.11. Do we have Hayden Keough?
Hello, Mayor Gondik and members of council. My name is Hayden Keough. I'm an urban planner with O2 Planning and Design, representing the property owner, macro realty, and management. Today, we're seeking your support for a land use redesignation application for the property located at 1155 Seventeenth Avenue Southwest in the community of Lower Mount Royal. Next slide. The subject site is located along the Seventeenth Avenue neighborhood Main Streets, east of Eleventh Street Southwest. Majority of the site is occupied by a surface parking lot with a small restaurant situated on the eastern portion. The surrounding area features low and medium-density mixed-use and residential buildings alongside several commercial shops along Seventeenth Avenue. Key services and amenities nearby include a variety of retail establishments along Seventeenth Avenue and the broader downtown, Thompson Family Park, and Senaltis School. Next slide. The site is well-served by transit with several bus routes operating along Seventeenth Avenue and nearby Fourteenth Street. And there is walking and on-street cycling paths that are also located nearby, providing convenient access to local recreational spaces and amenities. Next slide. The development vision for the site seeks to transform it from a surface parking lot and small restaurant into a six-to-seven-story mixed-use development with active commercial uses at grade. The vision aims to increase housing options near key amenities and employment opportunities, capitalize on the existing transit and active transportation infrastructure, and maintain the activation of the site by replacing the existing uses with a built form that contributes to the vibrancy of the Seventeenth Avenue neighborhood Main Street. Next slide. So the subject site is located within the Lower Mount Royal ARP, or Area Redevelopment Plan, which designates the site as Commercial Seventeenth Avenue. The designation supports medium-density development with continuous at-grade retail frontage. Majority of the policies of this designation in the ARP pertain to specific design considerations such as glazing, weather protection, and building access, which will be addressed during the development permit stage. The site is also located along the Seventeenth Avenue neighborhood Main Street, as outlined in the municipal development plan, which is intended to support a mix, a more intense mix, of residential employment and retail uses. Notably, the proposed land use and development vision align with the ARP and the neighborhood Main Street policies. Next slide. So the site's current land use designation is Commercial Corridor 1 with a maximum floor area ratio of three and a maximum building height of 23 meters. So to support the development vision, the application proposes a mixed-use active frontage MU2 district with a maximum density of five FAR and a maximum building height of 26 meters. The MU designation supports commercial uses at grade, again, supporting the activation of Seventeenth Avenue while also aligning with the ARP. And the proposed building modifiers accommodate, you know, greater ceiling heights for commercial spaces while ensuring the design can support the neighborhood Main Street density targets and, you know, remain contextually appropriate. Next slide. So for public outreach, the applicant team met with the Mount Royal Community Association, and we also installed the onsite signage to inform the community of the proposal. In terms of timeline, the application was submitted in May and received unanimous support from the Calgary Planning Commission in September. Next slide. So in summary, this land use application seeks to diversify residential offerings near transit, key amenities, and employment opportunities, transform an under-unified site into a vibrant mixed-use development, align with the Lower Mount Royal ARP and neighborhood Main Street policies, and propose a land use district and building modifiers that contribute to the vision of the Seventeenth Avenue, or contribute to Seventeenth Avenue as an active corridor. So that concludes my presentation, and happy to take any questions if there are any.
Thank you very much for your presentation. I don't see any questions for you in the queue. So thanks for taking the time to be here today. And let me ask, is there anyone else wishing to speak to 7.2.11? Right, seeing and hearing no one else, I'll close the public hearing on this item. And I don't see questions of admin. I'll go to Counselor Meehan, please, to move.
Thanks, Mary. I'm happy to move this. I mean, it was well outlined by the applicant. It aligns with the ARP. It's going to allow, you know, mixed-use development in a place that needs it. And the CA is, you know, in support. I think they wanted a lower FAR, but that's generally how these things go. Generally, we're heading in the right direction here, and I think it's a good application, so happy to move it.
Thank you, Counsel Penner II. Thank you. I don't see anyone else in the queue. Over to you to close, Counsel Meehan.
Closed.
Thank you. East Scribe to vote, please.
Mayor Gondik, all the votes are in.
Thank you. Could you display the results, please? That's carried unanimously. First reading of bylaw, 2ADD 2024. Anyone opposed? Hearing none, that's carried. Second reading of bylaw, 2ADD 2024. Anyone opposed? Hearing none, that's carried. Authorization for third reading of bylaw, 2ADD 2024. Anyone opposed? Hearing none, that's carried unanimously. Third reading of bylaw, 2ADD 2024. Anyone opposed? Hearing none, that is carried. Counsel, on this next item, we do have four people registered to speak, so we will not be able to get through it. I'm going to make the call that we're going to break for lunch now and come back here at 10 past 1:00. So we will see everyone then. Thank you.
Welcome back, everybody. Mr. Clerk, can we do a roll call, please?
Thank you, Mayor. On the roll, Counselor Sharp.
I am here.
Counselor Yennis.
Here.
Counselor Meehan. Counselor Chu.
Here.
Counselor Dollywood.
Here.
Counselor Wong. Counselor Walcott.
I'm here.
Thank you, Counselor Cora.
Here.
Counselor Chabot.
Present.
Counselor Penner. Counselor Spencer. Counselor McLean. Counselor Demong. And Mayor Gondak.
I'm here.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. I believe we are on item 7.2.12, Ms. Ganzar. Please go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor Gondak. The next item on the public hearing agenda is a land use re-designation application to enable a multi-residential development. Next slide, please. The recommendation before council is to give three readings to proposed bylaw 89P 2024 for an amendment to the Cliff Bungalow area redevelopment plan and proposed bylaw 301D 2024 for the re-designation of 537 20th Avenue Southwest from the multi-residential contextual grade-oriented or MCD district and the multi-residential contextual medium-profile or MC2 district to the multi-residential high-density low-rise or MH1 district. Next slide, please. The subject site is located in the community of Cliff Bungalow. The site consists of four recently consolidated parcels at the southeast corner of 20th Avenue and 5th Street Southwest. Next slide, please. The site is approximately 0.19 hectares in size and is currently developed with three single-detached dwellings that contain multiple units and a two-story apartment building. Next slide, please. The subject site is surrounded by a mix of residential built forms, including single-detached houses, shown in yellow, semi-detached houses, shown in orange, and multi-residential developments, shown in brown. The site is located one block west of the Fourth Street Southwest and three blocks south of 17th Avenue Southwest, both of which are identified as neighborhood main streets and consist of a mix of commercial uses and local services. It is important to note that according to the Main Street polygon of Fourth Street Southwest, this parcel actually falls within that. I know that was a topic of discussion at a previous item yesterday. Fifth Street Southwest is considered a neighborhood boulevard in this location, which are pedestrian-focused and highly-connected streets. And Western Canada High School is located two blocks to the west. The subject parcel currently has two designations. The northwest corner of the site where the apartment building is located is designated as the MC2 district, which is intended to be applied in close proximity or adjacent to low-density residential development, and is typically located along transit corridors and near community nodes. The rest of the site is designated as the MCG district, which is intended to accommodate multi-residential developments adjacent to low-density residential development. The MCG district has a maximum building height of 16 meters... Oh, sorry, the MC2 district has a maximum building height of 16 meters, and the MCG district has a maximum height of 12 meters. Next slide, please. This application proposes to re-designate the parcel to the MH1 district with a floor-area ratio or FAR modifier of 3.3 and a building height modifier of 21 meters. The proposed MH1 district is a multi-residential designation that is primarily for high-density development and is intended to be located at community and transportation nodes and along transit corridors. Next slide, please. In addition to the land use amendment, this application also includes an amendment to the Cliff Bungalow area redevelopment plan, or ARP, to support the proposed land use re-designation. Just as the site currently has two land use designations, it also has two typologies, as per Figure 3 of the ARP. The northwest corner of the parcel, where the apartment building is located, falls within the medium-density area, which is intended for apartment development in the range of four stories. The rest of the parcel falls within the medium-low-density infill area, which is intended for infill redevelopment in the form of townhouses and stacked townhouses. To enable the development of a multi-residential building, an amendment to Figure 3 is required to change the balance of the site to medium-density as well to match the northwest corner. Next slide, please. For the reasons identified today and in the report before you, Calgary Planning Commission recommends that council give three readings to the proposed bylaws for the amendment to the Cliff Bungalow ARP and for the re-designation of the subject parcel. Thank you, Mayor Gondak.
Thank you very much for your presentation. Let's open the public hearing on this item. It is 7.2.12. Do we have Liam Murphy?
Hello, Mayor Gondak and members of council. My name is Liam Murphy, urban planner with Civic Works. I'm joined by Jason Flurry, principal and founder of Unity, the landowner and developer, and Ken Shawman, associate principal and architect with S2, applicant for the concurrent development permit. I'm here today running the project team in our developer-builder-client unity. I see the clerk's already brought up the slides. Thanks so much. If you could go to the next slide, please. We're here today to ask for your support for a five-story-plus rooftop multi-residential application fronting onto the Fifth Street Neighborhood Boulevard, the community of Cliff Bungalow. The site's on a key corner on a higher-order roadway, nearby numerous transitions and amenities within the inner city and within arguably the most walkable neighborhood in town. Next slide, please. The project team has worked hard since outset to propose a development that we feel is aligned with the urban context of Cliff Bungalow. On your screen are some recently-approved or recently-constructed buildings of similar scale in this urban area, some 12 or more stories in heights, and others not highlighted or of similar scale, built many decades ago. Next slide, please. This application is also fully aligned with both the scale and urban form categories proposed in the draft, emerging West Elbow Communities Local Area Plan, expected to become the area's policy as soon as this upcoming summer. Although not required and with the plan not yet in effect, we voluntarily met with the West Elbow LAP team to discuss the proposal and its merits, and this meeting resulted in some development permit level revisions. Next slide, please. This application will enable 71 new homes in walkable Cliff Bungalow, and the landowner Unity is working with CMHC on a portion of those being deemed affordable or below-market rate. Vehicle parking is additionally proposed well in excess of bylaw requirements, and the land use has been adjusted to only what the concurrent development permit requires. Next slide, please. While no structures currently on-site are on the Calgary's inventory of evaluated historic resources, nor are any structures deemed heritage or protected, the project team does recognize that these structures are valued to some of the community. Based on feedback heard, we've made several moves, including adding additional brick materialities to Davis Block to better reflect the community character. Unity is also offering the existing structures for free to anyone willing to relocate them at their cost, and a salvage program is being explored for any buildings that are not relocated. Also, although not required, the project team is voluntarily incorporating a heritage plaque into the site, and the project itself has derived its namesake from Davis Block from the former longtime owner of these properties, the Davis family. Next slide, please. The other key piece of feedback we heard was related to mature boulevard trees along 20th Avenue, and while we recognize that this is a development permit-level detail as a key feedback item for this land use, we did want to note that we've been working hard with administration on a solution to retain these boulevard trees. You can see a rendering of the previous design to the top-left of your screen, and the revised design on the center-right, and we're very pleased to report that these mature trees are being retained and addressed through concurrent development permits, revisions, along with the other changes that have already noted. Next slide, please. We commenced an extensive multichannel outreach process at application submission, including multiple mailers, community-wide editorial, a digital information session, and both in-person and digital meetings with community groups. We heard a relatively high volume of feedback through our outreach process early on. Most feedback was related to matters already shared or other development permit-level details. We had a very positive working experience with the Cliff Bungalow Mission Community Association, who submitted a letter on the record, who feels very positive, and we'd encourage council to review it. As a final component of this application, we also prepared a robust "what we heard" report, which is included on the public record as well. Next slide, please, our final slide. This concludes our presentation. One last thing I'll note, as I see I have a bit more time, is we did note that there's a public submission on the record regarding traffic generation and specifically the laneway condition. I'll just quickly mention that these conditions were studied by Bunton Associates, our independent professional transportation engineer, and as a component of this application, this was submitted to the city of Calgary for review, and this study did go above and beyond the city's requirements, and just wanted to mention that, and we're happy to answer any questions that council may have. Thanks so much for your time.
Thanks very much for your presentation, and I'm not seeing anyone with any questions for you in the queue. So thanks for taking the time to be here with us today. I'm going to ask if we have Wayne McNeil. Hi.
Mayor, council members, thank you for having me. My name's Wayne McNeil. I'm here on behalf of the nine townhouse owners, residents, at Mission Crossing. Imagine 18 yellow t-shirts behind me entrusting me to give a five-minute presentation on their behalf, so keep that in mind. This is a consolidated viewpoint. Mission Crossing is located at 21st Avenue and 5th Street Southwest, on the laneway that's right behind, and I don't know if you've got the pictures up there, but on the lane. laneway, right behind this proposed development. And we are opposed to this application to amend this land use designation based on the lack of improved safety, which I know is a priority of the city. Are there some pictures here or no?
Did you send pictures in?
Yeah, I sent in a PDF file.
Did you? Okay, hang on a second, we're gonna look. We're just gonna pause the clock, too.
Yep. And if they're not there, I can send them in later and speak to them.
You know what? We'll look for them. Why don't you keep going?
Okay. So to be very clear right out of the gate, Mission Crossing is not opposed to development. We understand the need, and so we support development, but we feel this one is a little bit too dense in its configuration, and it does propose safety and risk issues in the back alley. So here are some specifics, and there are some pictures on the back alley with some verbiage around them that you can see, but I'll talk to them. First off, it's a single lane and does not allow for two-way traffic due to garbage bins, hydro poles, no light, no lights, and no snow plowing that we've ever seen in the back lane. It exits onto two-way traffic on Fifth Street, a bike lane which becomes marked north of Seventeenth Avenue Southwest, a crosswalk used by many pedestrians, including students going to and from Western Canada High School, and an offset road across Royal Avenue. So you can imagine exiting into that street with all of those variables going on. Currently, it is a very scary place to get in and out of from the current lane. On the other side of the lane is a fourth-street exit, which is probably more dangerous because it's blind on both sides, entering over a sidewalk onto a very heavy populated street, as you can well imagine, cornered by two restaurants on each side that both get deliveries every day, and when there's a truck there making a delivery, there's no access out onto fourth at all. The current traffic situation is very dangerous, and with the incremental vehicles being proposed in this re-designated area, which is sixty parking stalls, it will roughly double the traffic in the back lane exiting onto Fifth, which is already a problem. In anticipation of potential traffic safety issue, which Liam mentioned, you would start wondering why they anticipated traffic issues and had that transportation impact statement done. It was to try to get ahead of the curve because I think they knew that it was a potential problem, and I'll come back to that in a bit. That impact statement was completed under ideal conditions in March two thousand and twenty-four. There was limited snow on the ground. Obviously, snow is a very negative and dangerous impact on the back lane for four to five months of the year. We have to remember we're living in Calgary. There were a limited number of pedestrians given the time of year, and there were limited numbers of bicycles, scooters, given the time of year, and scooter traffic is heavily dense along Fifth. The traffic impact statement indicated there was an average of two-point-three collisions per year over the last eight years at that Royal Avenue-Fifth Street intersection. By doubling vehicle traffic exiting the back lane, the potential for vehicle and/or pedestrian accidents will increase. What is the threshold for this newly reality and who accepts that responsibility? Is that the developer? Is that the city? Because it's almost guaranteed it's gonna happen. A co-resident of mine and I met with Ward Eight councillor on September twenty-fourth. We highlighted our concerns regarding the back lane and already high volumes of pedestrian, cycling, and vehicle traffic at the Royal Ave and Fifth Street intersection, including students and parents accessing Western Canada High School just two blocks away, as was mentioned by administration. We left that meeting feeling that the proposed land use redesignation would ultimately be approved. That was the impression we got from our councillor, and now having sat in on these meetings for the last three days, I think that the idea of Canada needing homes, new residences, new residences at a federal level.
Sir, your time is just up.
Okay.
Thanks very much for joining us.
Thank you.
I don't see any questions for you in the queue, so thanks for being here today. Do we have Daniel Way?
Yes, Mayor Gondak, anyway, here.
Please go ahead.
Excellent. Danny Way, speaking on agenda item seven point two point twelve. I am also speaking against rezoning as proposed. I would just like to take a second to thank members of city council and thank the City of Calgary staff who are present today, especially given the long hours that everybody's put in over the last three days. Appreciate the hard work as well as the incredibly difficult work that everyone who is present there does. If you leave with one message today, it's thank you for holding these community hearings, very much appreciated. For context, I'm a born and raised Calgarian, got my engineering degree from the University of Calgary. Both my wife and I have owned and operated startups and small businesses in the city. We volunteer and support charities in the city, so appreciative of the community that we that we have here. We just moved into Cliff Bungalow this past year, June of two thousand and twenty-four, and we moved into a complex that would not have existed without rezoning. So certainly supportive of rezoning and certainly supportive getting more people into vibrant communities, especially downtown. I think that's personally a very important issue. With that said, I think there's a number of factors that make up a vibrant community. One of the documents that was mentioned earlier was the West Elbows Community Local Area Plan. That's a document that I reviewed before moving into this community. It covers historical places and spaces, it covers parks and open spaces, it covers safety, balancing a number of factors with housing for all and increasing population. Heard a lot about the housing challenges we're all in, and it's clear from the discussion and debate over the last few days that balancing increasing density with other factors is a very important issue. Today, I'm here supporting, absolutely supporting expanding the community and bringing in new neighbors, but a seventy-unit, rezoning to a seventy-unit building only seems to focus on one factor, which is getting more people in and ignores a number of the other factors laid out in the West Elbow Communities Local Area Plan. I walked by the proposed development area regularly. Last time I went by, I counted fifteen mailbox currently within the rezoned area. My understanding that rezoning that area specifically to MCG with a twelve-meter restriction or MC two with a sixteen-meter restriction, not going all the way to an MH one with twenty-one meter restriction, those rezoning steps would allow for thirty to thirty-five dwellings to be built. That's a doubling the number of density from the current fifteen mailbox that I counted, knowing that my count may not be perfect. I believe that type of development would keep with the current look and feel of the community. I've seen a number of three-story units being developed in our community since in the short time that I've been living there, and to me, the community is very welcoming of those type of developments. There's a brand-new one finished on Twentieth Avenue just a few weeks ago. That's a great example of development that I believe fits in very well with the community, balancing important factors. I do specifically want to echo some of the previous comments on safety. The West Elbow Communities Local Area Plan specifically calls out pedestrian safety and cycling safety, especially around schools. This development using the alley between twenty and twenty-first, coming out at the very odd intersection on Fifth Street with a cross, off-centered cross street, adding sixty more vehicles using that alley every day would increase the likelihood of a potential incident. More traffic equals higher likelihood. It's important to note that there are many pedestrians that use Fifth Street every single day. The alley comes out right at a pedestrian crosswalk. Bike traffic on Fifth Street is growing, so the likelihood of a potential incident is not just a fender bender. It could be a biker or pedestrian or a student from nearby school that gets hit or hurt or significantly worse. In summary, my vision for Cliff Bungalow involves more people, absolutely. Getting people downtown is important, but it needs to be done in the right way, balancing factors laid out in the West Elbow Communities LAP. Want to thank the council for listening. Again, thank you for the hard work that everybody does and appreciate the time to be here today.
Thanks very much for your presentation, Mr. Way, and you know what? We will always take compliments, so thanks very much for that. I'm gonna go to Carmen King. Oh, hi.
Hello, Mayor Gondak and councilmembers. My name is Carmen King. I'm speaking on behalf of the tenants of Davis Block, which are comprised of four buildings. Some of our tenants have lived here for over a decade. I know there's enormous pressure on all of you. I also have been watching the last few days. I'm inspired by the tenacity that all of you have to listen to these and to listen to the public, so I really appreciate you hearing me. I know there's always pressure for the future. We want units in Calgary. That demand is often at the expense of the beauty of the past. I don't know if you could see the images. I did include a few as well. And of course, I mean no shade to my landlords' unity who are here. I come in peace. I'm coming at this land designation from a different perspective, perhaps not included in strategic plans and data. I'm speaking for my people as a matter of record. I'm an artist, a writer, so please bear with me because I have a story. I was born and raised in rural Alberta. I got a BA and then I moved away. I've lived all over the world, France, Brazil, Japan, and I spent the last twelve years in Montreal. I tell you all of this because I'm one of the prodigal daughters who left Alberta in the early two thousands because no one told her she could be an artist or a writer. You were supposed to get a job, job, and so I left Alberta and I went to teach English. I didn't see an opportunity for me here. But all those years traveling revealed my secret writer heart, and in Montreal, I found a city ready to welcome me and my dreams. It was inexpensive, it was beautiful, it was rent-controlled, which we don't have here, and I managed to build two careers in that time, a professional one in communications and a creative one as a writer. Last year, I had a bit of a crisis. I missed my family. I felt isolated following many years as a foreigner even in my own country. I hadn't finished the book I'd been writing for years. Calgary seemed an unlikely place, honestly, to spread my wings as a writer and an artist, but I can only tell you that my soul called me home. So I moved back, and what I found purely by magic was my apartment on Twentieth Street. There are two images. This is one of a home looking out, but there's another one looking from, yeah. The one I live in now that is slated for destruction, and it is considered affordable at seventeen hundred dollars a month. I'm not saying that to be facetious. I mean it, it's still very high, even what's affordable, right, older buildings. I love my apartment. Its bones are cast iron and pale pine. Its passageways are arched and wide, corners rounded, it creaks and rattles and hums. The windows are tall, inspired, light floods every room at all different times of day. It is a mid-century modern work of art and craftsmanship, and I get to live here. My book has poured out of me in this apartment. Day and night, I have written here. One day, my book will be in excellent shape, and I'll say I wrote it right here in the tiny creative economy of my apartment block, under the magnificent canopy of grandmother trees that I am afraid, I know they've said they will save them, I don't know how that happens, there's old root systems or hundred-year-old trees, please save these trees. There's also lilac bushes, there's tons of vegetation on this block, it's very charming. I live in a mid-century modern work of art, and I live beside century-old houses. I read in the documentation about this trickle-up theory where people move into newer condo buildings and all of these quote-older, quote-cheaper buildings open up. Davis Block buildings are those buildings. I live in one. They're the accessible buildings. So many artists have also lived in these buildings and they had to leave. Okay, Katie Green, she's a phenomenal local artist. She lived there for years, she had to go. I'm hanging on till the very last minute, till they kick me out, but cities need beautiful, charming, well-preserved, older buildings in the inner city for people like me, for artists, for writers, for creators, for the little tiny creative economies that happen in these beautiful places, and they don't have condos. I'm sorry, but they don't. Maybe they do if you're forced to, but I don't think it's a natural occurrence. So I don't have the hard data that you all do, but it is a fact, I lived in Montreal and Paris, and I'm sure you've traveled to those cities and you know what I mean. I want to stay in Calgary, I want to invest in this city, and I want to help make it known for its livability, but especially its creativity. That's my mandate as a writer. So I'm really lucky. In Davis Block, I got a community, it's a very tight community, and I also got friends. So I'm here just to say only long live art, long live beautiful old buildings and trees, and thank you for your time.
Thank you very much for your presentation, and I don't see any questions for you in the queue, so thanks for taking the time today. Is there anyone else wishing to speak to seven point two point twelve?
Hey, this is Zach from the Cliff Bungalow Mission Community Association. I'll speak on this matter as well, please.
Okay, do we have? Oh, right here. Yes, sorry, I've got it right here. Zach Karim, right?
Yeah, that's me, yeah.
Okay, please go ahead.
Awesome. Yeah, so my name is Zach Karim, and I'm representing the Cliff Bungalow Mission Community Association on this matter.
This call is being recorded.
This is a bit contentious application for three reasons, we think. The first, as you've heard, is it requires the demolition of numerous market-supplied affordable housing units to make way for a new rental development.
This call is no longer being recorded.
The second is that it requires the demolition of four heritage era structures, and the third is that surrounding residents are currently living through two major projects already within a few blocks of the site. There's the Arlington Project on Seventeenth Avenue and Five A Street and the Truman Project just across the street from this parcel. So I think a bit of fatigue is sending in among residents, both with regards to construction itself and with regards to seeing a considerable amount of change in a short period of time, both with regards to the loss of affordable housing and the loss of heritage structures. In all, these three projects probably have required the removal of around forty market-supplied affordable housing units, and that's the reason the community association ultimately took a neutral stance on this project rather than a positive stance. That said, we are comfortable with the application and concurrent DP. The applicant worked with the community association and affected residents in good faith and is proposing a project that fits with the vision of both city administration and the community association for the community.
Thank you very much for your presentation. I don't see anybody else in the queue for questions for you, so thank you very much for joining us. Let me ask, is there anybody else wishing to speak to seven point two point twelve? Okay, I know that councillor Meehan has a question for the applicant, so Mr. Murphy, if you could come back up. Thank you.
Thanks for your submission. The submission was really well-done in terms of laying out all of the resident concerns and then what you're gonna do about them, and one of the things I didn't hear you talk about that was raised by a community resident today is the rehabilitation of the back lane that would be required. It's listed in the application. Do you know, can you explain a little bit more what would be required?
Sure, I'd be happy to speak to that. For clarity, I'm no transportation engineer, and our transportation engineer was available the past two days, but unfortunately has a conflict right now. Having said that, it's a condition of the concurrent development permit that the laneway would be improved. My understanding is that paving improvements, there is also NMAX power poles that will be buried as a result of this redevelopment, so it would be effectively, there'd be more space in the alley for driving. And there was also a safety analysis undertaken and required by the City of Calgary as a component of this application, and that was studied in the transportation impact statement by Bunton Associates that was submitted to this application to the satisfaction of the City of Calgary, in addition to a number of other things that were studied. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, it does answer my question. And then there were some concerns that if you're like doubling the residents, that the traffic impact would double. Is that what you found? Is that what Bunton Associates found?
That is not what Bunton Associates found. I don't have the number off the top of my head. I believe administration should have the report available, though.
Okay, thank you. That's it.
Thank you. Is there anybody left to speak to seven point two point twelve? No, I'm not hearing or seeing anybody else, so I'll close the public hearing on this item. I also don't see any questions of administrations. Councillor Meehan, you're up.
Oh, yeah, I'm just wondering if you can speak to the traffic impact assessment a little bit more, because it is a lot more residents, and so folks are concerned about the intersection. Yeah, just any information you can provide.
All right, thanks for the question, councillor Meehan, Shane LeBoutin, development engineering. Overall, so... Overall, so it's a low enough study that we call it a traffic impact statement, unlike Glamour Landing, where it'd be an assessment because of the scope and scale. So just let you know about that. Overall, though, there's a net increase of buildings. Should this be approved of 53 dwelling units, which accounts to, in a peak hour, about 15 more vehicles using that alley in an hour. So on average, one every four minutes. And then the overall impact to the adjacent intersection, where there is that offset, which Fifth Street has many offset intersections along it, is about just a little over 1% of a change to that intersection. And there was a collision analysis performed as well. We note there's a rapid flashing beacon. And overall, the city agrees with Bunton that we don't anticipate any additional safety issues from the development or traffic issues, morbidity issues, or anything like that.
Okay, thank you. That's all my questions, Mayor.
Thank you. Let's go to Counselor Karah.
Yeah, can you walk us through sort of the process we go through? I mean, obviously, this is, I mean, I'm deeply moved by the presenter who talked about, you know, the role of older stock buildings in maintaining a reservoir of affordable housing. There's obviously development pressure to turn those over. What do we do as we sort of apply a heritage lens to, as a planning department? Walk me through our sort of like triage of this from a heritage perspective.
Counselor Karah, typically when applications come in that include buildings such as this one, we do circulate to our heritage department for comment and for analysis by them. In this case, none of these buildings are protected by any heritage designation. So administration is extremely limited to not being able to do anything to preserve them.
Yeah, understood. But they are on the inventory?
No, they're not.
They're not even on the inventory? So there's nothing? Okay. And, okay, that's interesting to me. It's, okay, thank you.
Done.
Yeah, I'm actually surprised that these aren't on the inventory, or something, or at least the mid-century modern little apartment. It's interesting. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. I don't see anybody else with questions. I'm going to go to Counselor Walcott to move this.
Thank you. Sorry if you hear a little construction in the background. I'm just fucked. They're working on the hotel that I'm still in. The, one of the areas of discussion that I'd like to highlight for my colleagues, but also just really for the members of the public that I'm very grateful for the work that's been going on for this file, is the solutions that are on the table for kind of balancing out all these issues are still here. When we think about the traffic challenges that we see on any inner-city community, the answers are almost always of taking a look at redesigning our corners, redesigning our alleyways as they intersect with some sidewalks, redesigning our streets so that they're safer for the pedestrian. That is not at the absence of development, and it's not even a question of the cars. One question that came forward first, like who is responsible? And if something were to happen? And the answer is that it's always the driver. Because how we influence the behaviors of people who live in these spaces is by building better and safer pedestrian realms. The reason why that's so important is because alongside the fact that this is part of the West Elbow draft plans, it was also analyzed with regards to the West Elbow heritage plans, as well as taking a look at the safety and pedestrian realm enhancements that would become from a new LAP as part of the established area of growth and change. And there is an intense focus, an intense focus on Fifth Street, because it's a missing link between 17th Ave, where there was already a protected bike lane, and Elbow River, where there's also a multi-use pathway. And so the energy and the focus that we're seeing and discussing on this particular subject is still there. It's still present. It's still active. We are working every day to make sure that Fifth Street is even better for all of the people that will call it home. Importantly, to Counselor Karah's concern, this is actually the building as to why I supported his notice of motion on, with regards to heritage protection, is because we're seeing a number of units that could be protected that aren't purely because of the cost prohibition that's associated with it. And I know that we want to protect every heritage-era building. I know that we absolutely do. To do so requires that owner's participation in the work. And that's where those supports and the tax incentives and all of the energy that we spend there are going to protect the future heritage homes that we see that are just like this one. That is the challenge of the area, is we're balancing the need for housing with the proposed solutions that are on the table to address all of the concerns. Maybe not all of the concerns with this particular file, but all of the concerns in the long-term planning of our city. And with that, I wanted to support and I'm happy to answer any questions when we get to the end.
Thank you very much. Can I get a second round this one, please? Counselor Spencer, thank you. Please go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. Ms. King, I just wanted to say thank you for sharing your story. Genuinely appreciate that you took the time and gave us a window into your life and where you're drawing inspiration. Want you to know that yes, no votes can come across, obviously very cold and callous at times. And certainly, the city right now is struggling with the way that we are changing every single day. So I want you to know that my yes for this is in no way, shape, or form because I don't value your story. And I hope that the new canvas of the environment around you continues to inspire you regardless of where you go from here. So thank you for sharing today. It was a valuable moment. All that being said, I find myself resonating with what Counselor Walcott has opened with in terms of the tensions that we carry right now. In an ideal world where we had infinite resources, we could do incredible things with all of the heritage buildings in this community and work them into new developments, build around them. But we have to make hard decisions. This is a city that demands trade-offs. And I do believe the project that's before us will serve the area well for many of the reasons that Counselor Walcott just outlined.
Thank you. Let's go to Counselor Karah.
Yeah, I find my debate is going to be very similar to Counselor Walcott and Counselor Spencer's debate. I will note that this is a community that has been lovingly and lavishly sort of analyzed by proponents of heritage. This is not like an east of the Deerfoot community where the occasional heritage gem has never been gazed upon by the communities or the city's heritage community. And there are a lot of gems in this community. And if these are not even on the inventory, then it's not really a heritage conversation other than the fact that they're old and old things are nice. Older homes do play a role in providing a reservoir of affordable housing. And, you know, if the turnover rate is healthy, then projects like this will be old at a point in time when other sort of, and providing affordable housing, when new projects are being built. But with the growth that we're facing as a city, you know, there might be a lot more upward pressure. And you get gentrification, sort of displacement occurring because desirable neighborhoods, the demand far exceeds supply, which is where non-market solutions really have to come into play. The only other thing I wanted to note, because I was touched by the artist presenter's words, and I noticed that they had to take a phone call and left, was that I do have creative class people in my sphere of text who are watching this. And some of them took some exception to the idea that you can only be creative in old places and not in condos and things like that. There are a lot of amazing artists doing amazing creative class work and contributing to the cultural life of our city from all sorts of different housing solutions. And what works for one isn't necessarily the only solution. So we are in a housing crisis. This is a good, sensitive development. I am concerned about ongoing displacement associated with gentrification in these neighborhoods, which means we need to bring more non-market solutions to bear. But from the market side of things, more supply is always good. And for those reasons, I will be supporting this.
Thank you. Let's go to Counselor Meehan.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, I'm also sensitive to what the residents had to say and some of their concerns, like, but the applicant submission is really good, I will say, in terms of laying out all the concerns and the things that they're going to do. And I think because the owner developer is the owner and developer, and will remain being that, they're going to pay attention to some of these things. Like, I love that you're going to try and retain the trees. I think that's really critical. Paying attention to things like materiality and trying to make it fit in with the community. There is a whole section in the application too about affordability and the plan to apply for some of the CMHC funding for purposement rental, which will require them to have certain amount below market, which is pretty critical. Parking, they're going above and beyond for parking, too. And then, and then the upgrades to the lane. So as much as I, you know, I can sympathize with some of the things that the community is saying, this is a thoughtful developer. And you can see that in the effort that they put through. And so it's really hard to turn it down on the basis of them having kind of those answers to those things. And that's what makes this job really hard, because, you know, it's not that the concerns from the community aren't valid. It's just that there's, people are allowed to develop their properties that they own, even if we would prefer that they didn't. And then our secondary question to that is, you know, are they doing it in a way that is as respectful to the community as they can be? And compared to some that we see, like, this one is quite good. So for that reason, I'll be supporting.
Thank you. And I don't see anybody else in the queue. So let me go back to Counselor Walcott to close.
Thank you. And again, my, the gratitude when you have members of the public who look to protect what's theirs, what's their own, is a really significant dynamic that we see in a lot of places across the city, is people want their communities to be, in many places, sometimes it's what they purchased into, and in others, it's just what they've come to know. The challenge with so many of these neighborhoods is that what we've come to know is also something that has changed over time. And that change means that it's inevitable to shift, to grow, to expand, to sometimes shrink and see reductions. Cliffbungalow is no stranger to actually seeing units being reduced, and then no strangers to those units coming back in a larger form in another place. Where it's really important to talk about is that the solutions to the challenges that we face, they just don't always come in sequence. It's not always that there's a solution immediately because someone wants to develop this building, that we should stop it because we haven't solved a future problem that we're hypothesizing about. It's more that we actually can solve most of these problems together. And then those that we can't, we offer a trade-off to ask the question of is what's coming worth what we might be risking? And in this case, I think it is, is that the opportunity to add more housing to the community while still being respectful and protecting the tree canopy, which is something that was really important to this discussion from the early days, because those trees are one of the most significant heritage aspects of that street. That is something that we can do alongside the Fifth Street renewal, alongside safety precautions being added, just by nature of a busy street, as part of the future LAP, as part of just the priority focuses of the Ward Aide Office. And so with that, I'm supportive of the project and I'm happy to close.
Thank you. Let's go to East Scribe to vote, please.
Counselor Walcott, your vote, please. Oh, thank you. Mayor Gondak, all the votes are in.
Thank you. Could you display the results, please? That's carried 11 to 3 with Counselors Chu, Sharp, and Chabot voting against. First reading of bylaw, 89P 2024. Anyone opposed? Counselors Chu, Sharp, and Chabot are opposed, and that's carried. Second reading of bylaw, 89P 2024. Anyone opposed? Same division of counselors is opposed, and that's carried. Authorization for third reading of bylaw, 89P 2024. Anyone opposed? Hearing none, that's carried unanimously. Third reading of bylaw, 89P 2024. Anyone opposed? Same division of counselors is opposed, and that is carried. First reading of bylaw, 301D 2024. Anyone opposed? Counselors Chu, Sharp, and Chabot are opposed, and that's carried. Second reading of bylaw, 301D 2024. Anyone opposed? Same division of counselors are opposed, and that's carried. Authorization for third reading of bylaw, 301D 2024. Anyone opposed? Hearing none, that's carried unanimously. Third reading of bylaw, 301D 2024. Anyone opposed? Same division of counselors opposed, and that is carried. That takes us on to item 7.2.14. Ms. Ganzer.
Thank you, Mayor Gondak. The next item on the agenda is a land use redesignation application to again enable a multi-residential development. Next slide, please. The recommendation before council is to give three readings to proposed bylaw 88P 2024 for an amendment to the Bankview Area Redevelopment Plan and proposed bylaw 289D 2024 for the redesignation of 2303 16A Street Southwest to remove the density modifier from the existing multi-residential contextual grade-oriented or MCG district. Next slide, please. The subject parcel is located in the southwest community of Bankview, on the west side of 16A Street, between 21st Avenue to the north and 23rd to the south. Surrounding development consists primarily of multi-residential developments, with Buckmaster Park located across the street to the east, and the Bankview Community Association facilities located one block to the south. 14th Street Southwest is located approximately five blocks to the east and is considered a neighborhood main street. Next slide, please. The parcel is approximately 0.06 hectares in size and is currently developed with a single detached dwelling and a detached garage accessed from the rear lane. It is designated as the MCG district, which is intended to accommodate multi-residential developments adjacent to low-density residential development. This parcel currently has a density modifier of 72 units per hectare, which based on the parcel area allows up to four units right now. Next slide, please. The proposed MCG district without a density modifier would increase the maximum density to 111 units per hectare. This would allow up to three additional units on the subject site. The rest of the district rules would remain unchanged. Next slide, please. In addition to the land use amendment, this application also includes a proposed amendment to the Bankview Area Redevelopment Plan. The subject site currently falls within the conservation and infill area as per Figure 2 of the ARP, which limits redevelopment to a maximum of 75 units per hectare. To enable the development of up to seven units, an amendment to Figure 2 is required to change the subject site's typology to medium-low density, which allows for grade-oriented housing in a variety of built forms up to 111 units per hectare. Next slide, please. So for the reasons identified today and in the report before you, Calgary Planning Commission recommends that council give three readings to the proposed bylaws for the amendment to the Bankview ARP and for the redesignation of the subject parcel. Thank you, Mayor Gondak.
Thank you very much for your presentation. Let's open the public hearing on this item. It is 7.2.14. Do we have Ahmed Guda? Do we have anybody else wishing to speak to 7.2.14? Okay, I'm not seeing or hearing anyone. So I'll close the public hearing on this item. I'll see if there are any questions of administration. I'm not seeing any. So I'll look to Counselor Walcott to move it.
Thank you. Yep, happy to move. This is not a change in land use, just a change in the density modifier, because it's a unique parcel. It actually fronts onto two separate streets. And so the ability to be creative with the unit mix on the land is essentially what's being asked for. So this is something that it's received no opposition. It's more of a technical change, just to allow some flexibility within the district that already exists. And the amount of established area investment that is directly across the street from this with Buckmaster Park, this is one of those situations where it was chicken or the egg. Do you get housing and then investment? Well, Bankview's got housing. It's got the investment. And this is just a small change to add a little bit more. So happy, open. We'll answer any questions and close.
Thank you. Can I get someone to second this, please? Counselor Thaliwal, thank you. I don't see anyone else in the queue, Counselor Walcott, so you can close.
I'm closed.
Thank you. East Scribe to vote, please. East Scribe to vote, please.
We'll mark Councilor Demong absent. All the votes are in.
Thank you. Could you display the results, please? That's carried unanimously. First reading of bylaw, 88P 2024. Anyone opposed? Hearing none, that's carried. Second reading of bylaw, 88P 2024. Anyone opposed? Hearing none, that's carried. Authorization for third reading of bylaw, 88P 2024. Anyone opposed? Hearing none, that's carried unanimously. Third reading of bylaw, 88P 2024. Anyone opposed? Hearing none, that is carried. First reading of bylaw, 289D 2024. Anyone opposed? Hearing none, that's carried. Second reading of bylaw, 289D 2024. Anyone opposed? Hearing none, that's carried. Authorization for third reading of bylaw, 289D 2024. Anyone opposed? Hearing none, that's carried unanimously. Third reading of bylaw, 289D 2024. Anyone opposed? Hearing none, that is carried. Ms. Ganzer, let's go to 7.2.15.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is a land use redesignation application to allow for grade-oriented housing. Next slide, please. The recommendation before council is to give three readings to proposed bylaw 284D 2024 for the redesignation of 3011 12th Avenue Southwest from the residential grade-oriented infill or RCG district to the housing grade-oriented or HGO district. Next slide, please. The subject parcel is located in the community of Shaganapi on the south side of 12th Avenue between 29th Street to the east and 31st Street to the west. Next slide, please. The site is approximately 0.07 hectares in size and is currently developed with a single detached dwelling and driveway accessed from the front street. Next slide, please. Surrounding development consists primarily of single and semi-detached houses on land designated as the RCG district. There are also several parcels along 12th Avenue that have been re-designated to the HGO district and to various multi-residential districts. Bow Trail and the LRT Blue Line are located immediately north of the parcel, and the Shaganapi Golf Course is located across Bow Trail. The subject parcel is located about a seven-minute walk to both the Shaganapi Point and the Westbrook LRT stations. The site is currently designated as the RCG district, which allows for a variety of low-density housing forms, including row houses and townhouses. The maximum building height in this district is 11 meters and the maximum density is 75 units per hectare. Based on the current parcel area, this would allow up to five dwelling units. Next slide, please. The proposed HGO district allows for a variety of grade-oriented housing forms that are contextually appropriate in low-density areas and where dwelling units may be attached or stacked within a shared building or a cluster of buildings. The maximum building height is 12 meters and the maximum floor area ratio is 1.5, although the final FAR depends on all other requirements of the district being met, including setbacks, landscaping, and parking. Next slide, please. The HGO district is intended for parcels that support an approved local area plans urban forum categories of Neighborhood Connector or Neighborhood Flex. This map indicates that the subject site is identified as Neighborhood Connector on map 3 of the Westbrook Communities Local Area Plan and therefore meets the criteria to be considered for HGO. Next slide, please. For the reasons identified today and in the report before you, Calgary Planning Commission recommends that council give three readings to the proposed bylaw for the redesignation of the subject parcel. Thank you, Mayor.
Thanks very much for your presentation. Let's open the public hearing on this item. It is 7.2.15. Do we have Ben Lee? Everybody was waiting to see if that was Ben Lee walking in. It's not. Hi, Ms. Stengel. That would have been cool. All right. Anyone else wishing to speak to 7.2.15? All right, seeing and hearing no one on this, I will close the public hearing on this item. I don't see any questions for administration, so Councilor Walcott, I'll go to you to move.
Thank you. I almost asked a question of administration because I was curious whether or not during citywide rezoning, because this was in a completed LAP, if it was an area that was going to get rezoned to HGO anyway. But I'll just put that out there as kind of as a point, is that within a lot of this neighborhood within Shaganapi and in Kalarney, significant numbers of these really main street areas were to rezon to HGO. And I feel like there might have been a little bit of a gap here that I would love to follow up with later, just because this is an area that's between both train stations. You are halfway between Shaganapi Station and you're halfway between Westbrook Station. The work that's required, that the community is looking for, will all end at the DP stage for whatever the building will become. But the significant part is just the question of whether or not an HGO fits in this location, and it absolutely does. The argument could easily be made that this street should be higher. And there's a lot of questions around what the, seeing some of the redevelopments that are happening, is that could we have been a little bit taller? Could it be a little bit bigger? But I think the compromise that was made within the LAP is that just in between this little flex space between the two train stations, that HGO and local ground-oriented units were preferred. I think it's still a question that we should always raise, this close to any train station, if we should be looking at a little bit higher on these streets. But that is the decision about long-term planning, because we've started to approve them on this, and these are absent parcels left that are still looking to be rezoned. And we're seeing a lot of infill development on this street. And so the opportunity for consolidation is not there in this round. And so the idea of building denser ground-grade-oriented housing is really important, and I'm happy to support.
Thank you. Can I get a second on this, please? Councilor Penner, thank you. I don't see anybody else in the queue. Councilor Walcott, over to you to close.
I'm closed.
Thanks, East Scribe, everyone.
Mayor Gondak, all the votes are in.
Thank you. Could you display the results, please? That's carried unanimously. First reading of bylaw, 284D 2024. Anyone opposed? Hearing none, that's carried. Second reading of bylaw, 284D 2024. Anyone opposed? Hearing none, that's carried. Authorization for third reading of bylaw, 284D 2024. Anyone opposed? Hearing none, that's carried unanimously. Third reading of bylaw, 284D 2024. Anyone opposed? Hearing none, that is carried. Ms. Ganzer, let's go to item 16.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is a land use redesignation application to allow for grade-oriented housing. Next slide, please. The recommendation before council is to give three readings to proposed bylaw 279D 2024 for the redesignation of 3440 Richmond Road Southwest from a direct control or DC district to the residential grade-oriented infill or RCG district. Next slide, please. The subject parcel is in the community of Kalarney Glengarry at the northeast corner of Richmond Road and Kinsale Road Southwest. Next slide, please. The site is approximately 0.06 hectares in size and is currently developed with a single detached dwelling and a detached garage, which is accessed from Kinsale Road. There are three bus stops on Richmond Road located within one block of the parcel. Next slide, please. Surrounding development consists primarily of single and semi-detached houses on land designated as Direct Control District. The properties to the east and west of the site have both been re-designated to the Housing Grade-Oriented or HGO district. The subject parcel is currently designated as a DC district from the 1990s for the purpose of accommodating low-density residential development in the form of single detached or semi-detached houses on large parcels. Secondary suites are currently not allowed in the DC district as they were not a listed use in land use bylaw 2P AD. Next slide, please. The proposed RCG district allows for a variety of housing forms, including row houses and townhouses, along with secondary suites. The maximum building height is 11 meters and the maximum density is 75 units per hectare. Based on parcel area, this would allow up to four dwelling units on the subject parcel. However, the potential number of units depends on all other requirements of the district being met, including setbacks, landscaping, and parking. Next slide, please. For the reasons identified today and in the report before you, Calgary Planning Commission recommends that council give three readings to the proposed bylaw for the redesignation of the subject parcel. Thank you, Mayor Gondak.
Thank you very much for your presentation. Let's open the public hearing on item 7.2.16. Do we have anyone wishing to speak to this item? All right, I'm not seeing or hearing anyone on item 7.2.16. So I will close the public hearing on this item. I'm also not seeing any questions of administration, so I'll go to you, Councilor Walcott.
Thank you. This is, so the DC that's been in place, as was mentioned by administration, it doesn't allow secondary suites. And we've actually done a long list of allowances on this particular street to allow for secondary suites in the single detached units that are there and in some of the duplexes that are there. This is one of those applications. The only difference is our base district is RCG. And so they're moving from that to RCG instead of what would have traditionally been an R2 district without restrictions. And to be honest, the fact that they could have gone for HGO for future potential and chose not to, just to, because the real purpose is only for a secondary suite? I think that's an interesting conversation with the applicant later, but that's what's in front of us now for legalizing a suite. So thank you.
Thank you. Can I get a second, please? Councilor Wong, thank you. No one else in the queue, Councilor Walcott?
I'm closed.
Thank you. East Scribe, please, everyone.
Mayor Gondak, all the votes are in.
Thank you. Could you display the results, please? That's carried unanimously. First reading of bylaw, 279D 2024. Anyone opposed? Hearing none, that's carried. Second reading of bylaw, 279D 2024. Anyone opposed? Hearing none, that's carried. Authorization for third reading of bylaw, 279D 2024. Anyone opposed? Hearing none, that's carried unanimously. Third reading of bylaw, 279D 2024. Anyone opposed? Hearing none, that is carried. Ms. Ganzer, let's go on to 7.2.17.
Thank you, Mayor Gondak. And council, this is my last item on the agenda before I hand it back to Ms. Stengel for presenting. This next item on the agenda is a land use redesignation application to allow for grade-oriented housing. Next slide, please. The recommendation before council is to give three readings to proposed bylaw 294D 2024 for the redesignation of 2715 19th Avenue Southeast from the residential grade-oriented infill or RCG district to the housing grade-oriented or HGO district. Next slide, please. The subject parcel is located in the community of Southview at the southwest corner of 19th Avenue and 27th Street Southeast. Next slide, please. The site is approximately 0.07 hectares in size and is currently developed with a single detached dwelling with attached garage accessed from 19th Street and a detached garage accessed from the rear lane. Next slide, please. Surrounding development consists primarily of single detached houses on the south side of 19th Street and a mix of single detached houses and multi-residential developments on the north side of 19th Street. The 17th Avenue Southeast Urban Main Street is located approximately three blocks to the northeast, and the Southview Community Association facilities are located four blocks to the south. The site is currently designated as the RCG district, which allows for a variety of low-density housing forms, including row houses and townhouses. Based on parcel area, this parcel would currently allow up to five dwelling units. Next slide, please. The proposed HGO district allows for a variety of grade-oriented housing forms that are contextually appropriate in the density area. The maximum building height is 12 meters and the maximum floor area ratio is 1.5. Next slide, please. For the reasons identified today and in the report before you, Calgary Planning Commission recommends that council give three readings to the proposed bylaw for the redesignation of the subject parcel. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much for your presentation. Let's open the public hearing on this item. It is 7.2.17. Is there anyone wishing to speak to this? All right, I'm not hearing anyone on 7.2.17, so I'll close the public hearing on this item. I am also not seeing any questions of administration. Councilor Kra to move?
Yeah, I will move. And I will say that council, over the last decade and a bit, has lavished a tremendous amount of infrastructure investment into the once-infrastructure-starved communities of Greater Forest Lawn. And we do so with the hope that the private sector will respond. Our rebuild of the avenue has vexingly not resulted in significant development right on 17th Avenue. And there's a variety of reasons for that, and I'm pushing to get that done. But what council is probably not aware of is that a lot of the entitlements that we did were not just policy-based, but also land use-based. And there is an explosion of middle housing that is moving in corridor-adjacent. This particular parcel is coming in for a land use because we did not touch the south side of 19th Avenue in Southview. But we have made a major investment on 19th Avenue. It is one of the best active modes corridors in the city. It used to be this super-wide road that people would just speed down. And now it connects an incredible active modes bridge that we built, that's also a transit bridge across the Bow River Valley and up into the communities of Greater Forest Lawn. It connects it all the way to 52nd Street, which is our Max Bronz Corridor and which is also a major active modes corridor. Tons of people actually get to industrial jobs on active modes because it's the cheapest way for them to get there. And so this is a beautifully well-used corridor, and it is lovely to see local capital investing in housing solutions along it. HGO is perfectly suited to, for this interface along the active modes corridor. And I've worked with the applicant, and the DP is in, and it's looking good. And I hope everyone will support this.
Thank you. Can I get a second for this, please? Councilor Meehan, thank you. I don't see anybody else in the queue. Back to you, Councilor Kra.
I would like to take my clothes to expound on the history. No, I'm joking. Close.
Thank you. East Scribe to vote, please.
Mayor Gondak, all the votes are in.
Thank you. Could you display the results, please? That's carried unanimously. First reading of bylaw, 294D 2024. Anyone opposed? Hearing none, that's carried. Second reading of bylaw, 294D 2024. Anyone opposed? Hearing none, that is carried. Authorization for third reading of bylaw, 294D 2024. Anyone opposed? Hearing none, that's carried unanimously. Third reading of bylaw, 294D 2024. Anyone opposed? Hearing none, that is carried. Thanks for spending time with us, Ms. Ganzer. We are now on to Ms. Stengel in 7.2.18.
Thank you, Mayor Gondak. I'll be with us for the rest of the agenda today. Item 18 is a land use amendment to allow for new community development. Next slide, please. The recommendation before council is to give three readings to proposed bylaw 298D 2024 to redesignate 584th Street Southeast from the Special Purpose Future Urban Development, S-FUD, district to the Residential Low Density Mixed Housing, both RG and RGM districts, Multi-Residential Low Profile M1 District, and Special Purpose School, Park, and Community Reserve, SSPR, district. Next slide, please. The subject site is located in the community of Huxley, east of Stony Trail and south of the future extension of Memorial Drive. East Hill Shopping Center is located to the southwest along 17th Avenue, and Mountain View Memorial Garden and Cemetery is to the southeast. Next slide, please. The subject site is approximately 15 hectares or 38 acres in size and is currently being used as agricultural lands similar to surrounding lands in the area. Next slide, please. As seen in the previous slides, the surrounding area is currently being used agriculturally with no buildings. However, a variety of residential and special-purpose land use designations have been approved west of the site under the Liberty Stage 1 approval, allowing for new community development around a central wetland area labeled as the SUN district on the map here. The subject site and lands to the west are currently designated as the Special Purpose Future Urban Development, S-FUD, district, which is intended for lands that are awaiting urban development and utility servicing. The district allows for these agricultural uses as well as temporary forms of development, which may be removed when urban forms of development are applied to the area. Next slide, please. The application proposes four land use districts. The majority of the planned area is proposed as the residential low-density mixed housing as the residential low-density mixed housing RG district, which allows for a variety of low-density residential forms, including cottage housing clusters, duplex dwellings, rowhouse buildings, semi-detached dwellings, single detached homes, and the maximum height is 12 metres. On the northern boundary of the site, the residential low-density mixed housing RGM district is proposed, which is intended to accommodate rowhouse buildings, semi-detached dwellings, and duplex dwellings. The maximum height is also 12 metres. On the southwest corner of the site is the multi-residential low-profile M1 district, which allows for medium-density multi-residential development that may be attached, stacked, or clustered, and allows for a maximum height of 14 metres. The special-purpose school, park, and community reserve SSPR district is proposed on a portion of the site across from the M1 district, which allows for parks or open space that will be dedicated as municipal reserve. This is adjacent to the wetland site already approved as a special-purpose urban nature SUN district to the west. Next slide, please. The proposed land use designations are in alignment with the outline plan, which was approved at the October 17th Calgary Planning Commission meeting and is shown here. This outline plan forms a continuation of the Liberty Phase 1 lands to the west. Next slide, please. The application is in alignment with both the municipal development plan and the Belvedere Area Structure Plan. The ASP identifies the subject lands as being predominantly residential with a green corridor along the eastern boundary of the subject site. The ASP also identifies a neighbourhood activity centre in the north-central portion of the quarter section, which has already been approved previously in the Liberty Stage 1 outline plan. Next slide, please. This application would allow for continued development within the area, completing the Liberty neighbourhood, and is in alignment with the policy. Calgary Planning Commission supports the application and recommends that council give three readings to the proposed bylaw.
Thank you very much for your presentation. I'm going to open the public hearing on this item. It is 7.2.18. Do we have Bela Seal?
Mayor Gondak, members of council, my name is Bela Seal, planning consultant on the project. I'm here in support of the proposed land use redesignation. May I? Thank you. I'll keep my presentation really brief here, council. I know you've been through a long public hearing here. Stage 2 land use will complete the neighbourhood of Liberty comprehensively planned and designed on the principles of inclusivity, connectivity, and environmental stewardship. Council approved Stage 1 of Liberty in November of 2023, and Stage 2 outline plan and land use received unanimous support from Calgary Planning Commission on October 17th. On November 22nd, through mid-cycle budget adjustments, council approved mobility infrastructure required to continue growth in Belvedere and help establish a much-needed stable housing supply in Calgary's most affordable east sector. Liberty Stage 2 growth application was approved following the budget approval. We respectfully request support for the proposed land use redesignation and three readings of the bylaw. In closing, I would like to thank city administration for their help in efficient processing of this application, and I'm available to answer any questions council may have.
Thank you very much for your presentation. I don't see any questions for you in the queue, so thanks for taking the time to be with us today. And let me ask, is there anyone else wishing to speak to item 7.2.18? Not seeing or hearing anyone else, so I'll close the public hearing on this item. I also don't see any questions of administration, so I'm going to go to councillor Craw to move.
Yeah, I will just note that the demand in the Belvedere area is phenomenal. We are, you know, Chestermere has been the fastest-growing municipality in Canada for two decades, almost three decades now. And there has been a decided lack of product on the east side in Calgary. Council, in its wisdom, supported a lot of investment in the Belvedere area, and this is exactly in line with getting those... You can't build a house without getting a sale, like instantly out there. This is actually a very good project. It's taking advantage of a beautiful wetland and linking with a bunch of other good projects that are emerging out there. We're seeing the quality in the built form and the urban spaces increasing from the initial steps out there, and I'm delighted to support it, and I hope you will too.
Thank you. And councillor Chabot is seconding?
Yep, no. Happy to second the recommendations. As you probably saw in the report, there's still some additional investments that need to be made into the area, but being as council has already invested significantly into advancing developments in this area, it would be in council's or in city's best interests, I believe, to move forward with these proposed types of new developments, especially in light of the fact that we're talking about not single family residential, but a mix of housing types, and we're trying to build complete communities. That's very much in line with what's being proposed here. So, council, if you want to support the decision you made previously on investments into this area to accelerate some of the growth into our city, to allow some of that tax base to contribute to our overall costs, this is one of those opportunities. And as councillor Craw pointed out, this area is growing in leaps and bounds. I think it's projected to achieve up to 80% or 8% of our total new builds in the upcoming year. So let's maximize on that investment opportunity. Please support it.
Thank you. I don't see anybody else in the queue. Back to you, councillor Craw.
Closed.
East Scribe to vote, please.
Mayor Gondak, all the votes are in.
Thank you. Could you display the results, please? That's carried unanimously. First reading of bylaw 298D 2024. Anyone opposed? Hearing none, that's carried. Second reading of bylaw 298D 2024. Anyone opposed? Hearing none, that's carried. Authorization for third reading of bylaw 298D 2024. Anyone opposed? Hearing none, that's carried unanimously. Third reading of bylaw 298D 2024. Anyone opposed? Hearing none, that is carried. Let's go on to 7.2.19, Ms Stangle.
Thank you, Mayor Gondak. Item 19 is a land use amendment to allow for increased commercial uses on a developed site. Next slide, please. The recommendation before council is to give three readings to proposed bylaw 281D 2024 for the redesignation of 5268 Memorial Drive Northeast from a direct-control DC district to the Commercial Neighbourhood 2 CN2 district. Next slide, please. The subject site is located in the northeast community of Marlborough and is located at the intersection of 52nd Street Northeast and Memorial Drive. Marlborough Mall and the Blue Line is located to the west. Next slide, please. The site is currently developed with a single-story commercial building with parking located primarily between the building and the street, with some parking available at the rear of the site off the lane. Next slide, please. Surrounding development is primarily low-density residential homes to the north and west, with commercial businesses on the northeast and southeast corners of the intersection of 52nd Street and Memorial Drive. Multi-residential housing is located to the southeast along Memorial Drive and beyond. The subject site is currently designated as a direct-control district 3Z88 and is based on the local commercial district of the previous 2P80 land use bylaw. The DC limited the number of commercial uses on the site and allowed a maximum of one story to be built. Next slide, please. The proposed Commercial Neighbourhood 2 CN2 district is intended for small-scale commercial developments that are one to two stories in height and may include dwelling units on the upper floor. The district includes a larger list of commercial uses, allowing additional flexibility for tenants on the site. In a redevelopment scenario, the setbacks, landscaping, and massing rules of the district would apply. Next slide, please. The proposed CN2 district provides additional flexibility for commercial uses on a site developed with a single-story commercial building and is in alignment with the municipal development plan. Calgary Planning Commission supports the application and recommends that council give three readings to proposed bylaw 281D 2024. Thank you, Mayor Gondak.
Thank you very much for your presentation. Let's open the public hearing on this item. It's 7.2.19. Let's hear from Manu Chug, please.
Your worship and members of the council, my name is Manu Chug, and I'm here to answer any question if you have any.
Thank you for being here. We have a question from councillor Chabot.
Mr Chug, thank you for being here. So on this application, there's been some concern, of course, raised by the business owners specifically. And I'm just curious as to whether or not you've had a chance to engage the business owners that are currently on-site as far as what this proposal would mean to them.
Through the chair, yes, we had the pleasure to meet with them, and most of them didn't understand the application. And we explained it to them that this is just to get more variety of tenants. No tenants is being replaced, because the old bylaw was very restrictive.
Yes, thank you. Yeah, no, that's the only question I wanted to get an answer from you about, because I engaged them earlier on in the process when this was being circulated. I haven't had a chance to follow up with them to find out whether or not you've had a chance to meet with them. So thank you for that response. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, and I don't see any other questions for you. So thanks for being here today.
Thank you.
And let me ask, is there anyone else wishing to speak to 7.2.19? Not seeing or hearing anyone else, so I'll close the public hearing on this item. I don't see questions in the queue, so over to you, councillor Chabot.
Yeah, thank you. It's a pretty straightforward application. There are a number of businesses on-site, but there is also some vacant, unutilized sections of it. And I think part of it has to do with flexibility of what is allowed on that site. So by making a change to the land use bylaw to allow more flexibility on what businesses could occur there, it might help to encourage more activation of that site. So happy to support the application and recommend three readings of the bylaw.
Thank you. It's being seconded by councillor Valiwal. Okay. I don't see anyone else in the queue. Over to you to close, councillor Chabot.
Close.
Let's go to East Scribe to vote, please.
Mayor Gondak, all the votes are in.
Thank you. Could you display the results, please? That's carried unanimously. First reading of bylaw 281D 2024. Anyone opposed? Hearing none, that's carried. Second reading of bylaw 281D 2024. Anyone opposed? Hearing none, that's carried. Authorization for third reading of bylaw 281D 2024. Anyone opposed? Hearing none, that's carried unanimously. Third reading of bylaw 281D 2024. Anyone opposed? Hearing none, that is carried. Two more to go, team. 7.2.20, Ms Stangle.
Thank you, Mayor Gondak. Item 20 is a land use amendment to allow for a variety of uses, including medical activities on a vacant site. Next slide, please. The recommendation before council is to give three readings to proposed bylaw 288D 2024 for the redesignation of five parcels from two direct-control DC districts to a new DC district to allow for medical services on the site. Next slide, please. The subject site is located in the southeast community of Riverbend and is located between 23rd and 24th Streets Southeast, north of 96th Avenue, and is on the easternly edge of an industrially-based mixed-use area. It is immediately west of the former Ogden Dry Disposal Site, which is non-operational and closed in 1997. The site is now the location of the Calgary Rugby Park and Playfields. Next slide, please. The subject site is currently undeveloped with one vehicle access available at the northern portion of the site. Future vehicle access is anticipated to be from 23rd Street or 96th Avenue to allow for the continuity of the regional pathway along 24th Street Southeast. Next slide, please. Surrounding development is primarily low-density residential homes to the far west, with surrounding parcels designated as a variety of DC districts for sites that are in varying stages of development. The DCs to the immediate west allow for a variety of commercial and industrial uses, and the lands to the southwest allow for comprehensive multi-residential development with shared use of the existing underground parking structure. The special-purpose Future Urban Development SFUD district to the east is the former Ogden Dry Disposable Waste Facility and current rugby field site. The subject site is currently designated as two separate direct-control DC districts, which are similar to each other, and allow for a wide variety of commercial and personal service uses and industrial uses to serve the area. The DCs are based on the previous 2P80 land use bylaw and allow for a maximum building height of 16 metres. These are the same DCs that are located to the west. Next slide, please. The proposed DC district is based on the industrial-commercial IC district and adds a new discretionary use, health services, medical care, and recovery. This use allows for both inpatient and outpatient medical care, including recovery from surgical services, which may include overnight stays. It does not allow for emergency-intensive or long-term care, differentiating it from the hospital use in our land use bylaw. The district also allows for a variety of light industrial, commercial, and office uses, along with a maximum floor area ratio of 2.0 and a maximum height of 16 metres, which is similar to the current direct-control districts on the site. Next slide, please. This site is located within the setback established by the Government of Alberta under the Matters Related to Subdivision and Development Regulation. Section 17 states that building sites for a school, hospital, or residence must not be located within 300 metres of the disposal area for non-operating landfills. However, the regulation also states that these requirements may be varied by a subdivision authority or a development authority, pending an approved report from a professional engineer that addresses the criteria for a variance. Initial reports reviewed through this application have indicated this site is appropriate for these uses. If this land use is approved, a future development permit application will be circulated to the province for further review in alignment with this section. Next slide, please. The proposed DC district would allow for a variety of uses on a site adjacent to commercial, industrial, and residential uses, and is in line and recommends that council give three readings to proposed bylaw 288D 2024. Thank you, Mayor Gondak.
Thank you very much for your presentation. I'm going to open the public hearing on this item. It is 7.2.20, and we've got Cathy Olberg.
Good afternoon, Mayor, members of council. Cathy Olberg with BNA in support of the application and happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thanks very much for being with us. Oh, I do see a question. Councillor Chabot.
Yes, thank you, Ms Olberg. I thought if I stood and asked you a question that it might encourage some of my colleagues to join me, so we could extend this meeting a little longer. No, I actually don't have any questions. Thank you for being here.
Bless you, councillor Chabot. Ms Olberg, there's no questions for you. Thank you very much for taking the time to be here today. I'll ask if there's anybody else wishing to speak to 7.2.20. Seeing and hearing none, I will close the public hearing on this item. I also don't see any questions of administration, so I'm going to go to councillor Penner to move this.
Yeah, happy to move this item. I think it's a pretty straightforward application and a rapidly evolving and growing area of the city, so I think this is a good complementary use.
Thank you. Thank you, councillor Craw. A second?
Yeah, to second and debate a little bit, and to push back a little bit on the mover, this is, you know, a site where the economy changed. And there are parades built, and there are elevator shafts built, and this is not that space? Okay. Happy to support this.
Thanks. This is a site a little bit further to the north of the site, the site with the elevator shafts. We actually re-designated to residential not that long ago, so this is the complementary use, you know, with the supporting jobs on the north end of the same road.
That's what I meant.
You're good to close, because there was nobody else in the queue.
Yeah, I closed, yeah.
Yep, I know. Just, you know, maybe let me pop in with the "go ahead and close." East Scribe to vote, please. I get messages everywhere.
Mayor Gondak, all the votes are in.
Thank you. Could you display the results, please? That's carried unanimously. First reading of bylaw 288D 2024. Anyone opposed? Hearing none, that's carried. Second reading of bylaw 288D 2024. Anyone opposed? Hearing none, that's carried. Authorization for third reading of bylaw 288D 2024. Anyone opposed? Hearing none, that's carried unanimously. Third reading of bylaw 288D 2024. Anyone opposed? Anyone opposed? Hearing none, that is carried. Ms. Stengel, you must be very happy. We're on to the last item, 7.2.23.
Thank you, Mayor Gondak. Item 23, and indeed our last item today, is a land use amendment to allow for residential development. Next slide, please. The recommendation before council is to give three readings to proposed bylaw, 86P 2024, for a policy amendment to the revised East Mackenzie Area Structure Plan, and to propose bylaw, 286D 2024, for the re-designation of 30 Copper Pond Passage from a direct control DC district to the multi-residential, low-profile M1 district. Next slide, please. The subject site is located in the southeast community of Copper, Copperfield, and is located south of the Shepherd landfill and west of Stony Trail. Next slide, please. The subject site is currently undeveloped with one vehicle access available at the southeastern corner along Copper, Copper Pond Passage Southeast. A storm pond is located to the north, and commercial buildings are under construction on neighboring sites to the east and south. Next slide, please. Surrounding development is primarily low-density residential homes to the southwest, industrial businesses to the northwest, a storm pond directly adjacent to the north, and a variety of DC direct control districts to the southeast, with multi-residential homes beyond. The DC district south of Copper, Copper Pond Passage is based on the mixed-use general MU1 district, allowing a street-oriented building form along Copper Pond Passage, with custom building height rules for the property lines next to residential districts. The subject site and the adjacent parcels north of Copper Pond Passage are based on the industrial edge IE District, which is intended to be located adjacent to residential parcels. It has limited opportunities for outdoor storage and has increased landscaping requirements. The base IE District allows for a maximum building height of 12 meters and a maximum floor area ratio of 1.0. Next slide, please. The proposed multi-residential, low-profile M1 district allows for multi-residential development in a variety of building forms with a maximum height of 14 meters and a density between 50 and 148 units per hectare, which on a site of this size would allow between 39 and 116 units here. As previously noted, the site is south of the Shepherd landfill, and 11 meters along the northern portion of the site is within the required setback from the landfill. Residential buildings are not allowed within this setback. However, this area may be used for a variety of other uses, including drive-aisles, parking, landscaping, or other similar activities allowing the site to function as multi-residential. Next slide, please. Should council approve the land use re-designation, a policy amendment is required for the revised East Mackenzie Area Structure Plan to change the category on the site from business park to residential. This amendment is in alignment with the municipal development plan, which identifies the area as being within the planned greenfield and planned greenfield with area structure plan typology. Next slide, please. The proposed M1 district would allow a residential development next to a storm pond and commercial businesses in alignment with policy. Calgary Planning Commission supports the application and recommends that council give three readings to both bylaws. Thank you, Mayor Gondak.
Thank you very much for your presentation. Let's open the public hearing on this item. It is 7.2.23. Do we have, is it Neil or Neal Graywall? Neil, Neil Graywall, come on up.
Good to go.
Yeah, we're ready when you are.
Okay, awesome. Hello, Mayor Gondak and members of council. I'm Neil Graywall, an urban planner with Civic Works, and I'm joined by Zach Hooves, senior urban planner at Civic Works. We are the applicant on behalf of EC Living. We are here today seeking council support on an M1 re-designation proposal intended to introduce diverse housing options and is supporting childcare use to this part of Copperfield. Could the clerks please move to slide two? Building on administration's presentation, the subject site is at the center of a developing mixed-use multi-residential node, is within a five-minute look of many commercial, retail, and employment opportunities, current and future transit, parks and open spaces, schools, and a built-form context of planned and completed commercial and multi-residential buildings of one to six stories in scale. Our client EC Living owns 10 acres of land that are, that they are in the process of developing on the north and south side of Copper Pond Passage Southeast, with the subject property the last to be developed in the assembly. Despite their best effort, our client has struggled to find commercial retail tenants for the site due to its location within the community and far from highway access. There's a Stony Trail plant interchange at 130th Ave just east of the site, but is currently unfunded and over 10 years from construction. EC Living does see market demand for diverse housing options in the community and directed us to make the re-designation, which also supports Calgary's housing crisis. Next slide, please. Taking a closer look at the 10-acre assembly, we can see it is developing into a commercial mixed-use node. A number of communities serving single-story commercial units comprised of food and personal service uses have been constructed to date on sites one and two, which neighbor the subject site, and on site three to the southeast, a number of single-story commercial buildings, including a grocery store and four-to-six-story multi-residential buildings are approved and set for construction. Further south are existing three-to-four-story multi-residential neighbors. And it's our professional opinion that the re-designation to M1 will contextually fit with its surroundings, delivering more housing and a childcare facility that aligns with the use and scale of existing and planned buildings. Next slide, please. This slide shows a preliminary development concept for the lands under the M1 district, which will be refined in a forthcoming development permit submission. The dashed line on this slide highlights a 450-meter provincial landfill setback. All buildings fall outside of this setback in alignment with the subdivision regulation. Currently proposed are five buildings. A mixed-use one nearest the Commercial Street hosting rowhouse units and a childcare facility, while the other four are rowhouse buildings. All are proposed at three stories in scale. Approximately 94 homes are proposed, and EC Living intends for the future development permit to meet or exceed bylaw parking requirements. The project team will work with administration to ensure a great design outcome for the site that takes into consideration road and building placement and how interfacing is successfully achieved. Next slide, please. Our team provided a substantial variety of digital and analog opportunities for community groups and members to ask questions and provide feedback through the project timeline in addition to providing periodic updates. We received a low amount of feedback from the community and had positive meetings with the Copperfield Mahogany Community Association and Ward 12 councillor's office in support of the project. Next slide, please. This concludes our presentation. We kindly ask for council support. The applicant team is happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your presentation. So, Mr. Hooves, you don't need to speak, or...
Just here to be a friend.
To support, excellent. I don't see any questions for either of you in the queue, so thanks so much for taking the time to be here today.
Thank you.
And I will ask, is there anybody else wishing to speak to item 7.2.23? Seeing and hearing none, I'll close the public hearing on this item. I am also not seeing any questions of administration. Councillor Spencer, over to you.
Thank you, mayor. This is a neighborhood that's very near the end and completion of development. On the outside edges, it's connected into a really extensive pathway system. Really incredible investments, places to go and learn. So I'm excited to see childcare thoughtfully embedded in this. It's also in need in our neck of the woods. Close to lots of other amenities, a regional athletic park, really close to a major shopping complex, not too far from BRT up 52nd. I think it makes a lot of sense for the reasons that the applicants outlined.